Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 14th, 2022 work session and public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Weissar.
Weissar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Dubruck.
Dubruck here.
Gray here.
Okay, we have minutes for March 10th and March 24th. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. And would someone like to move to approve the March 10th minutes?
Tidings has a motion to approve March 10th meeting.
Do you have a second?
I will second.
Oh.
Faster than me.
Ladies before gentlemen, sorry.
Absolutely.
You can get the next one.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, March 24th.
I'll move to approve the March 24th minutes.
I'll second.
Right.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, we have a nine-page agenda, first in my memory this evening. How we will do this, for everybody watching and those of you here in person, 6:30 to 7:00 will be our work session. We typically have a policy, if we get through our work session items, we will start the public hearing immediately following that tonight, but no later than 7:00. So we'll get as much done between 6:30 and 7:00, do our public hearing, and then we'll reconvene probably after a short recess to go back into work session and finish out our agenda. Okay, so Doug, why don't we start going through the tabled items? And...
Want to start with the quickest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll do them in a different order than what's on the agenda, but I'll try to make it pretty clear which one we're discussing. Okay, so we'll start with tabled item number four, 1527 Empire Boulevard, the Elizabi property. At the last meeting, the board had asked the staff to draft Part II, III EAF and draft approval resolution. We had drafted both of those and provided them to you prior to this meeting for your consideration.
Yes, I believe everything staff-wise, review-wise is acceptable. Bob, are you good with the status of the project and the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to make a motion to approve?
Sure, motion to approve the EAF.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And motion to approve the approval resolution for this project?
Tidings, aye.
Second, sorry.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right, we'll move, we'll go to application number five, 1698 Penfield Road Eagle Cleaners. Since our last meeting, the applicant clarified the roof is not navy color, it is a charcoal color. They have provided a revised elevation showing the knee wall, stone wall extended on both sides, as well as raised up five feet on the front of the building, as well as provided the rendering in color to show the color of the stone and the roof. Staff has reviewed their most recent set of plans and at this time has nothing but minor technical comments left.
Okay.
They also put some more green space in, right?
Yes, yeah, one of the comments that we had previously discussed was removing some excess pavement, reducing some of the lane, the open pavement areas in the front of the building, so they will be increasing their green space from its current existing condition.
Okay, so staff is comfortable with the status and everything?
We've prepared a Part II and III EAF, as well as draft approval resolution for this project as well.
Okay, and Kelly, you're good with where it stands?
Yep.
Okay, would you like to make a motion for the EAF and, yeah, move to approve the EAF?
A motion to move to approve the EAF.
Perfect.
Tidings, second.
You got a second? Good.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, and the resolution would be the next step?
Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, all right, good on that.
Move on to tabled application item number six, 2140 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, splash car wash. Since we last met, the board at the last meeting directed staff to provide the plans both to our architectural consultant, as well as our landscape consultant. We did receive back memos from the architectural consultant on the 11th of April, and we received responses from the landscape consultant on the 12th of April. We also received revised plans on the 11th of April. Knowing that it was post-deadline, the applicant has requested that the board table it for further discussion at the April 28th work session.
Okay, I will move to continue tabling per continued review based upon the recent submissions.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, all right.
To application number seven and application number eight, 100 YMCA Way and 300 YMCA, that is Penfield Squares Lots Three and Four. Since we last met, our, prior to the last meeting, on March 23rd, our architectural consultant had provided his memo back to the board. We did forward that on to the applicant for their consideration and responses to his comments. At this time, we haven't heard anything back from the applicant on those architectural comments. They have provided a map showing the future dumpster location. They did, the applicant had further discussions with home leasing on a potential pad site for the dumpster, and they have secured that location, and they're showing it on the map that's currently on the screen before you guys.
Okay.
Right now, staff is waiting on responses to the architectural comments. The consultant had pointed out some areas that he thought could be revised.
Can we bring up the architecturals? So, somewhat Chris's comments, if we want to do a quick summary of that, and I just want to get a kind of a straw poll on how everybody feels about each one of these buildings in terms of the architectural treatments and so forth. And maybe we start with this one, since it's up on the screen, let's call this Building Three.
Yeah, so his comment was that this one was very in keeping with the existing Penfield Square development to the north. It really plays off of the various materials and colors. The grayscale colors are very similar to the independent living building called the Gardens at Penfield Square, whereas, and the roof line, being a flat roof was very similar to that building, whereas the roof, the building directly next to this, which is the assisted living building, is more of a green color with a traditional gable roof. The wood element was very similar to what was originally proposed when that, the previous application, the Penfield Square application, was before the board and ties in with the bridge that connects the independent living and assisted living buildings over what they call the pedestrian spine. So it really ties in those architectural features to the existing development. But Chris's comment was that it really doesn't, you know, while the wood feature does provide somewhat of a, you know, an iconic look, it really doesn't meet what he considers to be some of the landmark or agrarian feel of Penfield in this area. So those are really his comments on Building Three. On Building Four?
Can we, let's go back to Building Three.
Pause Building Three.
Just real quick, I don't know what everybody else's opinion is on this, I'd like to know. I personally, I kind of like the look of the building. I understand what Chris's points are. I don't, I don't know if we need every building to look like a barn. But that's my take. I mean, I'm personally comfortable with this, this building, the way it is. How's everybody else feel? Bob?
Yep, I, I think it fits in well with what's there on the project. So I think that that building would complement the project that's already there, Penfield Square. So I have no problem with it.
Okay, Terry?
So this one doesn't fit in with the other one, right? Right, you like this, this different aspect of it?
So this one is the one that's set further back from the road, it's not right up along 250, so this one's about halfway back in the development, and it'll be sort of directly adjacent to the assisted living building, the one that's sort of in the middle.
Penfield Square.
It's a use of green, various green colors. So it's set further back, and it sort of blends between the two different buildings that are there. The building next to it has a gable roof, the one in front has the flat roof, so it pulls a flat roof from that. And it pulls a color from one of the other buildings, whereas the, sort of the wood feature pulls off of the bridge. So it's similar, but different in enough that it doesn't look exactly like the building next to it.
Yeah.
But it still feels like it's part of a cohesive development.
Yeah. Okay, while he's thinking.
I'm good with it. What is, so what, that mustardy yellowish, it's probably brown, what material is that?
It's wood.
It is wood, okay.
It is wood, yep.
Or it's a wood composite.
Yeah, a wood-like composite, yes.
Okay, yeah, I think it looks great, very sharp.
I'm not sure, but okay, I can probably live with it, I guess. I don't, you know, not seeing the transition, just looking at this and, you know, not the other part. I'm a little hesitant to go make that move right away, but if you guys want to go with it.
Can we zoom out on the, I think on this image, there's the, so that's the assisted living portion of the, you know, the existing assisted living portion currently on the right?
Yes, they were proposing.
So this will be just to the south, so if you look at this, the YMCA is to the left.
So they are proposing a mix of materials. It'll have the composite wood siding, the dark gray is a fiber cement board, the light gray is a horizontal vinyl siding, and at the bottom along the first floor is a darker color, earth tone brick.
Okay, let's go to Building Four.
So Building Four, you know, really plays off what was originally proposed for the commercial building that was there as part of the Penfield Square development. That one was very heavy on woody earth tones.
This is the one closer to the road?
Yes.
And what we're looking at is, as we're on 250, looking left or west, that's the part facing 250?
Yes, I believe so.
It's a east elevation, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, so, yeah. Yeah, so this one was intended to play off of what they originally had proposed back in 2018 for the Penfield Square development. That one was very heavy into sort of a cabin-ish wood, dark wood material. So they did try to bring that back with some timber elements. So if you were to look at the north or south elevation, the end of that building sort of does jut out a little bit with timber framing in the gables, as well as over the porches. This one proposes a mix of earth tone materials that are, include vertical board and batten fibers, cement siding, horizontal vinyl siding, as well as a stone, riverstone veneer on the first floor levels.
I guess the thing that I would, I'm wondering what it would look like if that stone went all the way across the, the front on that first floor with that band and, you know, separating the two? If that would break up that mass kind of in the middle on the north and south?
One of Chris's comments was that the small canopies that they provide or show could be enlarged. It would provide one more weather protection, but also give it a little bit more interest. You know, his comment was that it, it did a good job of keeping with the architecture of the development, but it's not as, not as fully transitional between, you know, the more modern architecture of the development to the west and the sort of rural architecture, you know, across Route 250 to the east.
Okay, so, quick comments, Kelly first.
I agree with you with the bottom, although does, does that middle piece stick out further than the rest of the building?
It does.
Right, so that would be the only...
It could come out and around the back.
Yeah.
Terry?
More brick and the canopy, you want to see the canopy or no?
I think that's a good point. I, certainly, I'm...
I think it would be, look nicer with the brick lying in front.
To me, it would break that middle mass that sort of looks like a face to me. Bob?
Oh, yeah, the, the second floor, those, those features, the balcony, I guess, they do look, scale-wise, a little on the small side to me.
So maybe make them a little bigger with bigger canopy?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with the canopy. And then the, if we could go back...
Fit a table and chair out.
To the, the front view. I do like that, that stone veneer in that center feature.
I do, too.
That looks nice.
And the wood.
Yeah, I like that, that front view.
Okay, all right, so we're waiting for their responses to his comments. We can potentially, at this point, start getting a draft approval put together. Any other deal breakers or any other roadblocks that we need to overcome on this, on these two applications?
So you're going to send this one back to Chris Lopez?
This is what, this is what Chris Lopez reviewed, we're waiting for responses or potentially revision.
From the applicant, and then our comments on...
Okay, so we're going to wait anyway, so...
Yeah, but if we can get things started, we can start reviewing and get things put together. How's engineering and...
We're good.
Okay.
I just, I had one question for engineering. On the dumpster location, they didn't show, I believe there's an RNE transformer kind of to the north of the shed, and that should probably be depicted in there.
Yeah, we can make a comment, just the transformer.
And making sure that the rules of access, I guess, to that are still, aren't encumbered by the enclosure.
Sure.
Okay, somebody want to move to table this?
Tidings, move to table at this time.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, we have four minutes.
We have four minutes?
Four minutes before we need to start moving around again, ready for a public hearing.
Okay.
So what can we cover in four minutes?
The last three are our mixed-use development applications. I don't know if you want to try one of them and see if we can get further discussion in four minutes, or would you like to wait until after? I mean, we could start it and table it or stop it.
You know what, we're, we're going to need at least probably 10, 15 minutes on each one. So why don't we move into the public hearing, and we'll get that started, get those applications heard, and then, once that's done, we'll reconvene and start this. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we will break for about five minutes while we move up to the dais, get things reconfigured microphone-wise, and our first applicant can come up to which table, the table over there?
Either one will work, we do have...
Okay.
Hookups.
So, first applicant, could you get your stuff set up? Why don't we go to that one? And if you have a computer that you need to, or want to plug in, I believe we have that, we'll reconvene as soon as we're ready to go.
Okay, behave yourself.
Appreciate you again, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good seeing you.
Thank you for coming by.[1330.13]
Welcome to the public hearing portion of the April 14th, 2022 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Um, we have a full agenda this evening, and just like to explain a little bit how the process works. If you haven't been to a public hearing here in Penfield for the planning board, we have several items on the agenda this evening, and, uh, the process works in the following manner. The applicant, uh, will sit at one of these two tables. They will present the proposed project that they have to the planning board. The planning board members will ask various questions about the project for clarification purposes, and then we'll open it up to public comment. And we, big reason why we're here is we are soliciting and definitely want to hear comments from the community about, uh, development and proposed development in Penfield. You can, uh, make your comments in person here, uh, in the town hall. There are, there are some slips of paper over on the table at the entrance to the auditorium. You can fill out your name and address and which application you'd like to speak to on that, and then Lori will bring them up and pass them over to me, and I'll call, uh, those folks as, uh, I go through. Alternatively, you could raise your hand, and I'll, I'll call on you to come on up. When you do approach to make a comment, please sit at, um, the, one of the empty tables. Uh, give us your name and address and, uh, for the record, and, um, direct your comments to the board, not, not to the applicant. You can, if you're not here in person, uh, we have millions upon millions of people watching, uh, around the world, online, streaming, on all sorts of services, and, uh, you can call in at 585-340-8771. Uh, the people down in, uh, Command Central will put you in the queue to, uh, give your comments over the phone, or you can go to www.penfield.org, and there's a link to this meeting on the homepage, and you can, uh, if you know how to type, you can, uh, type a written comment and submit it electronically. Please silence all electronic devices. More than likely, one of our phones will go off and we'll be, oh, shoot, we didn't do that. But, um, all right, with that, Doug, please read the first item.
All right. Um, so we'll be reading the first two together. They are very related projects. Um, application number one, APD Engineering and Architecture, 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York, 14564. On behalf of Fairlane Dr. LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 and 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval with a conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a 2,700-square-foot Taco Bell restaurant with drive-through and associated site improvements on 1.9 acres located at 1,800 Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by EC Barton &amp; Company and Zoned General Business, GB. Application number 22P-0009, SBL number 93 dot 15 dash 1 dash 57. APD Engineering and Architecture, 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York, 14564. On behalf of Fairlane Dr. LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for the proposed site improvements on 1.9 acres located at 1,800 Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by EC Barton &amp; Company and Zoned General Business. Application number 22P-0010, SBL number 93 dot 15 dash 1 dash 57.
Okay, so just for the folks who are in the audience, uh, he read both application number one and two. We're hearing them together, kind of as one, uh, because they happen to be on adjacent parcels, and it just seems to make sense, and, uh, the, uh, all that wasn't only to put you to sleep. So.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's nice to be here tonight. I know you have a long agenda, so I'm gonna try to cover a lot of material, and feel free, of course, to interrupt at your meeting, uh, but we're gonna try to cover a lot. This is our first public hearing. Uh, for the record, my name is Betsy Brug. I'm an attorney with Woods Oviet Gilman. Chris Cambar from, uh, APD is here with me tonight. You might, uh, have seen Stephanie Albright at the last couple meetings. She couldn't make it tonight, and Chris has stepped up here. Uh, Rob Schut is here from, um, Hospitality Syracuse. Uh, Mike McCracken wasn't able to be here, so hopefully between the three of us, we'll be able to answer all your questions. We've been working on this project for a while. Uh, this is not our first meeting. This is our first public hearing, um, but we've been working with the staff, had a couple PRC meetings, we've been receiving comments, we presented a sketch plan to you not all that long ago. We've been trying to just hit the issues, cross them off, make the changes to the plans that you've requested. I think we're in pretty good shape doing that. Um, the last round of comments, I don't think there was a whole lot there that we couldn't address, but Chris will get into that in a little bit. This is our first public hearing, so I'm just gonna quickly kind of go through some of the background and our process. So, as Rob mentioned, we're here for, um, site plan subdivision and, uh, special permit approval. Uh, we do have an area variance application in at the zoning board. We plan to be there next week. There are several, uh, site-related variances and some sign-related variances, as the board might recall. Uh, we need a variance for lot coverage, we need a variance for the front setback of the Taco Bell, and I think we need a third variance for losing, uh, for the amount of parking. Um, but again, that'll be a zoning board issue. Uh, so what we're proposing here is, you're all familiar with the existing home outlet property. It's on Empire Boulevard and on Creek Street. We're across the street from Delta Sonic. Um, you see that large parking lot there. The plan is to subdivide that property and relocate, uh, the Taco Bell in town. They're gonna build a new Taco Bell here. Um, the plan that you have shows two drive-throughs. The plan is to, um, probably start with one, possibly, but we'd like the option to add the second. They're working on some technology, uh, and depending on how that goes. So we, we've shown the second drive-through. Um, we've been through it, I think, with this board a little bit, and the decision was made to, to leave that on. Um, the restaurant is, uh, 2,689 square feet in size. Uh, we show the stacking. We've been working on the parking. Some of the significant issues that have come up, um, in the past were things related to the, uh, the drive-through, um, stacking. Uh, we had made some changes to the plan. I think you probably recognize that here. Um, the, um, I don't even know how you define that drive aisle has been narrowed to, um, address issues with, uh, traffic circulation and vehicle, to accommodate vehicles pulling out of parking spaces. Um, so that was one of the major changes that had come up. Um, in terms of the site itself, uh, it's already gone to county planning. Um, there aren't any significant, uh, issues as far as the county comments. We're showing, uh, a shared driveway on Creek Street. It is on the home outlet parcel. Um, we are showing a shared driveway on Empire Boulevard. Um, there was a request for some improvements to the, uh, existing home outlet property, so this site has had no stormwater management. So water quality and, um, stormwater management have been incorporated, not only for the Taco Bell, but for that parcel. We're, we're increasing the green space on that property a little bit as well. So there's a lot of overall improvements to the property that come along with the, um, proposed Taco Bell. Um, as far as the operation, uh, I think about 90% of the business is now drive-through. Um, so that is, you know, a very important part of the business. The drive-through has been designed to provide, um, adequate stacking, um, to provide good traffic circulation on-site. Some of the comments from this board related to that. Um, so those kind of issues have been addressed. Hours of operation, I just was confirming, typically 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, uh, for the dining room. The drive-through would stay open till midnight, um, 2:00 AM on weekends. Uh, we think we have adequate parking with the shared parking. We talked about this a little bit during the sketch plan. The, uh, uh, again, Taco Bell is, you know, largely a drive-through, um, customer base, although they do use some dining room parking, um, and there will be shared parking with the home outlet, which is not a huge parking user. And while they have a very large building and questions had come up about possible reuse of that building, a large part of that building is really just storage. It's not insulated, as I understand, and, you know, there'd be some significant work required if that building were to be repurposed in the future. Um, let's see. Let's see if I want to cover anything before I hand it over to, to Chris here. So, um, we did get, um, a variety of comments, um, during the course of these informal meetings from the PRC. I think we've addressed the majority of them. A couple of the significant ones we probably want to talk about tonight because we just need to get a little bit of direction from the board. Um, one of them, I think, is a, um, I guess it's, I consider it a technical comment, but I think that it was sent back to the board. Um, one of the comments in the PRC comments was about having two sets of site plans for either, they're two applications. I think Stephanie has consistently said we were gonna submit one set of plans for both because the sites really operate it, operate as an integrated type of a site. The driveway for the Taco Bell, um, as you can see, is on the home outlet parcel. There's shared, shared access, so it seemed to make sense. Um, it could be split up, but I, I do know it's a significant amount of work, and I believe Mark had said that that would be the planning board's call as to whether we should, should go with one set of plans, whether we could do that. So I know Chris needs that direction just to be able to move forward with the plans. Um, let's see. Hmm. I think there are a couple other issues that we'll get to. Let's see. Okay, so, um, you're familiar with the Taco Bell operation? The, um, the drive-through operation, I don't know if you have any other questions about how we've laid that out, but I'm confirming that we are showing both drive-throughs so that they could both be installed if that comes about. We, we just don't know when or if that could happen. Um, but if there's any issues with the drive-through, we've addressed the, uh, stacking issues, I think, to, you know, to the comments that the board has provided and that the PRC has provided. Um, we've enhanced the green space. We've enhanced the snow storage. Um, there was a request for replacement of the existing board-on-board fence for the home outlet, so that is being provided. Um, like I said, one of the issues was the, uh, that driveway that shows the stacking that would go to the second drive-through, that was kind of reconfigured, made a little more narrow so that it would accommodate the traffic. The only thing I think that is not on this plan, and you'll be getting in your next submission, is that we were asked to stripe and add drive aisles on the Creek seat, Creek Street side of the home outlet. We just didn't want to give you a new plan today, you know, without submitting it in advance, but I think that will be on the next plan that comes in. Um, we have some materials, so we're prepared to talk about architecture. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions about the operation. Shouldn't you wanna, would you like us to get into some of that now?
Yeah, why don't, uh, like, you do your thing, finish your presentation, then we'll start.
Great.
Peppering you with.
Um, yeah, I think Betsy hit almost everything. Uh, I know internal circulation was part of the big discussion. Uh, I know Stephanie did, uh, narrow up the drive-through lane in the middle to 10 feet, uh, to allow more room for cars pulling in and out. Um, as Betsy said, that we're, over on the home outlet parcel in the back, we've added a lot of striping, we've added some dumpsters, uh, we're working on the DOT comments, um, and configuring that, uh, access point to line up, um, with Sovereign Drive. Uh, let's see.
I think we need to ask about the sidewalk, the comment about the sidewalk.
Yep. Uh, one second, let me just go through these. So, we don't need a speedies permit. Uh, we're less than one acre of disturbance. Um, we're reducing the impervious area. I know we're adding some water quality features. I think a, um, water quality unit to help treat the water, uh, as we know the Rondacoy watershed is, uh, sensitive. Um, Betsy already mentioned the parking variance. Um, 90% of our business is going through the drive-through, um, and, uh, as far as stacking concerns, we have the extra drive-through. There's a lot of, a lot of cars stacking now before it even comes back into the parking lot and where the, uh, parking is. Uh, snow storage, uh, we've got a few areas shown around the lot. Um, one over on, uh, Empire South, uh, Western side, along the Northern side of the property, and also the, uh, Southeastern side of the property. Uh, there's a few snow, snow storage areas shown. Um, let's see, there, she's showing a pylon sign now at the entrance, uh, that's across from Sovereign Drive for the home outlet. Um, so they were looking to put a pylon sign, uh, back there on Creek Street. Uh, so that will be in the updated plans, uh, coming up. Uh, but I just wanted to mention that. Dumpsters will be over there as well. They'll be shown. Um, we did add the fence. I think that's covering all the comments and main concerns, um, certainly.
Do you want to go over, uh, architecture?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask about the sidewalk, because I think one of the comments was about, uh, requesting a seven-foot, uh, easement for the sidewalk, but there actually is an existing sidewalk there. Um, I think that comment presents a significant challenge. I mean, there is a sidewalk there already, um, but I don't, you know, we'd have to significantly reconfigure it to make that work. So I don't know where that, I don't recall who made the comment, but I think it was in the PRC comments.
Okay, that's something that we'll have to address.
Yep.
Uh, not right now. I, I don't have an answer for you right now.
I bring it up because it would be a significant, uh, you know, change to have to fit that in.
Okay. I'm guessing that was our engineering department. Um, so.
Understood.
We will discuss this with them.
Okay. Um, so I can touch on architecture. Um, if you want to bring up the elevations, please. Okay. Um, so we have, uh, you know, the elevations broken out by which way they face. Um, you know, south elevation faces towards the parking lot or the, uh, home outlet store. Um, west elevation faces towards, uh, Empire. East elevation is towards Creek Street, uh, and then the north elevation, uh, faces, uh, north, uh, where, I think it's a.
Basically, the intersection of Creek and Empire.
Yep. Um, so we have, uh, based on the, you know, viewpoints, which are a lot, uh, from this site, uh, Taco Bell has added, uh, tower features, uh, on many of the corners and sides of the building to delineate the entrance, but also locate their signage. Uh, those towers are primarily, uh, beldin brick, uh, labeled tower brick, and the main building part, um, along the sides, you know, is, you know, is a, uh, the main brick is also a beldin brick, just different color. Uh, the stone, um, is the accent, um, along the bottom. Uh, basically, it's a water table, and then they have a sill, uh, made out of stone, and there is some ephesus along the top, uh, where the cornices are. Uh, we've got windows on all sides of the building except for the east elevation. Uh, that back area of the building is, is primarily for, you know, uh, storage and whatnot, so there's, you know, no reason to put windows in there, and no light will come through them. Uh, they have two entrances, one on the, uh, front or, um, sorry, the west elevation.
Is that what you consider the front?
It's not really the main entrance, but it's the front as far as it faces the main street.
Okay.
Uh, most people will use the entrance that, uh, come in on the south elevation, just because the parking's there.
Sure.
Most people actually use the drive-through, but they're, they're gonna come in and out if they come into the store, probably the double doors on the, uh, on the south elevation. Um, and we've got a tower there, uh, to denote the entrance and draw people to that, to that area. Um, they have, uh, the signage, um, there's four Taco Bell and the Bell signs, um, located on the building, both the northwest and east elevation, and then just the Bell over the, uh, double door on the south elevation. Um, I think that's about all I've got for architecture.
Okay.
I think I've mentioned to the board, or we've mentioned in the past, that if you wanted to see one of the more recent, um, Taco Bells that they've built, there's one on Chilai Avenue in Chilai, and there's, uh, there's one in Henrietta, I think on Lehigh Station Road.
Yep, there's.
And one in Perrington in the, uh, Aldi Plaza. But they build a nice building. They're not the, uh, prototypical, um, you know, buildings.
So, those would be similar in nature to this?
Yes.
Architecturally?
The one on Empire, excuse me, is not similar to this architecture, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. They, they use a, a variety of different, um, materials, um, to really, you know, bring out the building. So it's, yeah, this is the, uh, Taco Bell in Henrietta on Lehigh Station that was recently opened.
Okay.
And, of course, like I said, you know, we need, uh, several site variances. I don't know if the planning board typically makes a recommendation on variances, but I'm sure that the zoning board would probably appreciate knowing that you at least have some positive thoughts on, on the variances of the, and the site plan, so I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Uh, let me know when you're, when you're all.
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
All done. Terry, you want to start?
Oh, really? Yeah. Uh, okay, there's a few questions, I guess they have. Okay, so this is the, basically, the, the style we're gonna build a new one, correct? Now, is that a step into the entrance? You got a step from the parking into the, uh, restaurant?
There is a step at the sidewalk, not from the building.
All the way around?
Yes.
Three quarters of the building?
Uh, except for the ramp for the ADA.
Yeah, you got the ADA. How many parking spaces are, we're gonna, obviously, you're not gonna have enough parking spaces, correct?
Well, there's.
It's one of the variances?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yep. The, the project as a whole, uh, when considered with home outlet, uh, still needs a variance, but it, it lends itself to have shared parking. Um, so they're, they're very different uses, uh, so we think their peak times will be much different. Um, on the Taco Bell parcel itself, they have 16 spaces. Um, as a whole, uh, well, there's 46 spaces on the home outlet, um, so as a whole, they have 62.
I want to point out that the Taco Bell, I believe, per code requires 49 spaces, which is just a lot of parking for a use that really does not need 49 spaces.
Even between, okay, so that's just for your building?
That's just the Taco Bell. That's the code requirement for Taco Bell.
Right. So you guys need 16, or you're gonna get 16, why 16? And then what about home outlet across the way? They can survive and whatever?
So home outlet, I think, per code requires 100. I believe, I believe you told me they have, they have some relief, I think, from, like, a while back, for like 70?
Yeah, back in 1978, they were approved for a variance for 71.
So they had 71. They're a very low traffic, or a low parking generator. They currently have 41, or, excuse me, they currently have 38.
42.
Am I reading wrong? My plan might be older. Oh, I'm looking at an older plan. I apologize. Yeah, 42.
46?
They have, they have 42 on site for Mark Halk's, 99 required, and we're proposing 46 on theirs, uh, their lot.
And I think the thing to keep in mind, again, I don't know if anybody's been in that building, but anybody that wants to repurpose that building is gonna have to do a significant amount of work. They're gonna have to come in for approval. Um, you know, I don't have expertise in the real estate market, but I would suspect that any different type of a use in the future would not be using the building as is, since they'd be here for approvals.
Okay.
What about, like, during the construction phase and things, is it gonna be a problem with, uh, getting the vehicles in and out once you start your construction? Moving around there with, uh, home outlet and them, you know, I assume you're gonna have to fence it, right, around the construction?
Yeah, we would be putting fencing around the construction. That would be, um, most likely, we, we would limit traffic to, I would think, Creek Street if we can, if we can help it, the least busy of the two.
Rob, do you mind introducing yourself and the, your address and everything for the record?
My address?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, my name is Rob Shuts. I am a project manager. I oversee construction of, for Taco Bell, uh, for Hospitality Restaurant Group. My personal address is.
You don't have to do your personal, your business one, it's fine.
Okay. Um, I've actually only been with the company six months, and I, the address, I don't always have it memorized. I'll give you my personal address.
Oh, our remote world.
Do we, do we?
I don't think we need his address.
How many, do we know offhand, how many variances are you gonna need altogether? Have you?
Uh, yes, I can actually tell you. So we need those three site variances. Uh, we need a bunch of sign variances for the, I can actually tell you that the, by dropping a. As a whole, well, there's 46 spaces on the Home Outlet, so as a whole, they have 62.
I want to point out that the Taco Bell, I believe, per code requires 49 spaces, which is just a lot of parking for a use that really does not need 49 spaces.
Even between, okay, so that's just for your building?
That's just the Taco Bell. That's the code requirement for Taco Bell.
Right. So you guys need 16, or are going to get 16, why 16? And then what about Home Outlet across the way? They can survive and whatever?
So Home Outlet, I think, per code requires 100. I believe, I believe you told me they have, they have some relief, I think, from, like, a while back for like 70.
Yeah, back in 1978, they were approved for a variance for 71.
So they had 71. They're a very low traffic, a low parking generator. They currently have 41, or excuse me, they currently have 38.
Forty-two.
Am I reading wrong? My plan might be older. Oh, I'm looking at an older plan. I apologize.
Forty-six?
They have, they have 42 on site for Mark Halks, 99 required, and we're proposing 46 on theirs, their lot.
And I think the thing to keep in mind, again, I don't know if anybody's been in that building, but anybody that wants to repurpose that building is going to have to do a significant amount of work. They're going to have to come in for approval. You know, I don't have expertise in the real estate market, but I would suspect that any different type of a use in the future would not be using the building as is, since they'd be here for approvals.
Okay.
What about, like, during the construction phase and things, is it going to be a problem with getting the vehicles in and out once you start your construction? Moving around there with the Home Outlet and them, you know, I assume you're going to have to fence it right around the construction?
Yeah, we would be putting fencing around the construction. That would be, most likely, we would limit traffic to, I would think, Creek Street if we can, if we can help it, the least busy of the two.
Rob, do you mind introducing yourself and the, your address and everything for the record?
My address?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so my name is Rob Shuts. I am a project manager. I oversee construction of, for Taco Bell, for Hospitality Restaurant Group. My personal address is.
You don't have to do your personal, your business one, it's fine.
Okay. I've actually only been with the company six months, and I, the address, I don't always have it memorized. I'll give you my personal address.
Oh, our remote world.
How many, do we know offhand how many variances you're going to need altogether? Have you?
Yes, I can actually tell you. So we need those three site variances. We need a bunch of sign variances for the, I can actually tell you that the, by dropping a subdivision line on the property, the existing Home Outlet sign is now going to need a side setback variance, but it's, you know, an invisible line. The proposed Taco Bell sign will need setback variances on Empire. We need a variance to allow a second monument sign, or pylon sign, I should say, for Creek Street, because there'll be two signs on that same parcel. And then for the wall signs.
And directions signs?
And actually, I should, I got to stand corrected. Signage is not a variance in the town of Penfield. It's a special use permit. So those are not variances. So essentially, we just need, I believe, those three site variances, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. The lot coverage, you know, is a variance, but it's an improvement on the existing conditions. There's, I believe we're decreasing the impervious area, correct?
That is correct.
Yes. The setback of the restaurant requires variance, and I don't think you could build anything in this space without a front setback variance. If you look at the configuration, if you pull up the plan, it's, you know, where the streets are starting to converge towards the intersection. So given the narrow dimensions, I don't think you could build anything here without a setback, front setback variance.
Front setback required is 80 feet.
And then for the amount of parking.
How's this parcel compared to where you guys are down at Baytown there? You know, the parcel size and, is this similar to that location, or it's larger?
I think it allows them to get the operation that they want. I don't think they have that at that location with the drive-through configuration and the new look and feel of the building. I don't think they can do that over at Baytown. And I think the parcel is larger, if I remember. I'm just trying to go off memory. I don't remember.
The parcel at Baytown is larger?
Yeah, I think that, I think it's smaller, just doesn't allow them to, to, you know, tear it down and rebuild and that kind of thing.
I know that they've been looking for a location for a long time.
Yeah, what about deliveries and things of that nature in this building?
So their truck deliveries will come in one entrance and out the other. And they get deliveries, I believe it's once a week, is that about right?
Obviously, depending on volume, but generally, once a week.
Normal business hours or?
Yes.
What about the curb cut, the traffic? Now you mentioned you're all set with Monroe County, UT or the state?
Working on it. We're addressing their comments and configuring the driveways to meet their requirements.
On both sides, Creek and Empire?
I don't know that we're actually doing anything in Empire, so I don't think, I don't actually think we're getting a permit because we're not doing any work for the driveway and the right of way there. But on Creek, in the back, we are. Because that, that driveway is getting relocated. There's two driveways back there now. We're, we're reducing that to one, and we're lining it up with the roadway across to make it safer and per their requirements.
Lighting of the building?
Yeah, they have building-mounted lighting. They're going to have, you know, LED lights in the parking lot, you know, typical downcast, dark sky compliant light fixtures.
They're not on 24 hours, right? Because you guys, close like a 10 o'clock at night or something.
They, they turn off after our employees. They're timed, they're on a timer to turn off half an hour after our employees leave the building.
Move the microphone in between the two of you.
Yeah. They're, they're programmed to turn off about a half hour after our employees leave the building at the end of the night.
And snow removal and stuff, you going to push it, leave it on your prep, or you going to push it on Home Outlet? Or you're going to put that in stuff?
It'll be a split. So, so the properties, basically, are going to be, you know, one use, one maintenance. Most of the Home Outlet snow will go on their parcel, and most of the Taco Bell will go on their side. I don't think any plow driver is going to push snow around the Taco Bell building to push it to the north there, but, so I have a feeling that some of that snow will just be residual and go over to the Home Outlet side.
Was it, oh, the, yeah, the, the plans, I think, for both sites, I think, I don't want to speak, I think they still get to have separate plans, I think, for lot three or for both parcels, I would imagine. One is not going to make it, is it?
Well, you mean, actual sets of plans?
Yeah.
That's a, I think that's an internal discussion. I'm not sure if, if there's two applications, there's essentially two sets of plans, even if they might be essentially duplicates. I, I mean, this is something that.
Yeah, the number of the plans isn't the issue. It's the dividing it, right?
I think somebody had mentioned actually dividing the plans and only having Home Outlets improvements on one set of plans and Taco Bell improvements on another set of plans, but that's, it's a lot of extra work, but one, you won't be able to see how both properties actually work together as one development.
All right, so we'll have to find out the details as to what the nature of that request was and why.
I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, most towns would allow it the way it is, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, any other?
I think I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned that 90% of your business is now drive-through. What was that percentage pre-COVID?
I believe it was 70 to 75.
70 to 75%?
It varied in locations. I mean, there were some locations, I think you would say was 50/50, but it's been, it's been trending that direction. Certainly with COVID, it pushed the trend. But, you know, just the, the notion of adding a second drive-through, Taco Bell doesn't have the technology yet to be able to have two drive-throughs, but that's what they're going for. That's what they're, that's what they're.
So when you say two drive-throughs, I think my understanding was, one is, all right, order online for, like, curbside pickup? And then the other one was a national drive-through where you go to the, you know, I want to order two tacos and?
So, so that, what you're, what you're describing at first is what we, what was called Go Mobile?
Uh-huh.
That is what Taco Bell has rolled out as a beta right now, but they are pursuing full double drive-through like you would see at McDonald's. Two, two order points that would then merge into a single line.
And then, am I looking at two windows here?
There, yes, there are two windows in this.
So you pay in one and pick up with the other, essentially? Okay. So the, these two drive-throughs are actually full, in the traditional sense of what we all understand as a drive-through?
Correct.
Not the only curbside mobile pickup?
Correct.
Okay. Generally speaking, what's the busiest time of day? What's the busiest day of the week? And what's the busiest season for the location? Or really, any, on average?
So I think busiest is generally dinnertime, you know, the dinner hour, you know, from, I would say from 4:30 to 6:30, 7 o'clock. In terms of season, I can't really answer that. I don't know that.
Okay.
But.
So you wouldn't suggest, I mean, it's not an obviously seasonal business then?
No, it's, it's year-round. I mean, I think, I think any sort of seasonal drive would be based on what's around it, you know, if it's, if they're shopping around it and it's Christmas time, that you might see a bump, right? In terms of busiest day, generally, our traffic starts picking up on Wednesday and increases, you know, through to Saturday, and then, you know, drops off again on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, and then the hours that you had suggested for a later drive-through time of 2:00 AM, is that Friday, Saturday, or Saturday? So you mentioned weekend, so I'm, I'm assuming it's Friday night and Saturday night?
Friday night, Saturday.
Not Saturday night and Sunday night, correct? Typically, at the busiest time, how many cars are queued up at a typical Taco Bell? And you can give me a range of, all right, at the least busy Taco Bell, the busiest time, there's this many cars, and, and then what do you anticipate at this one, and what are you seeing at Empire Boulevard?
I, I don't have the information on Empire Boulevard right now. We can certainly get that. I mean, what we, what Taco Bell typically requires as a minimum is eight cars stacking. They like to see 12, and I think in this design, we have, I think we have 17 showing, if I, if I'm reading that correctly.
I think you got 16, but there's 11 in the outer aisle, and then another, one, two, three, four, five in the inner aisle.
Sixteen.
But I guess that's where I'm, you know, we have some significant concerns about the, the proposed traffic flow.
Sure.
And the reason I'm asking you all these questions is how, how well can the concerns be mitigated based on the queuing that you have proposed? And is it a true concern? I mean, you have 90% of your business is drive-through, so you want cars queuing, right? And is that going to create a major traffic problem in the, on the overall site? And that's?
That's going to be wrong right there for. I know that the, there's the center aisle there, the 10 feet, that was made narrow. It was narrower than it was, and signage has been put in there so that that could be stacking without interfering with vehicular circulation. There is signage that's been added. There's the stop right there.
Right, so the average, you know, let's call it my 22-year-old son is out with his friends and they want to stop at Taco Bell. Is he actually going to pay attention? And I don't want to throw my kid under the bus, but.
Yeah.
Are they really going to pay attention to the, all those internal traffic control features or signs and so on? Or are they going to ignore them and, hey, I'm pulling up right behind this guy? Because, or is it going to be quickly, oh, jeez, I'm, I'm following the rules, but yeah, you know, my nemesis from high school just pulled in off Creek Street and, like, cut in line?
Oh, we can't plan for nemesis.
I'm just.
And there's plenty, and there's a lot of other options, too. I mean, I know that, you know, it's not the only drive-through in the neighborhood, so.
Right.
You know, I think there's some rules of reason here also.
I, I think we've planned for 16 cars, which for a Taco Bell is more than I think we would normally see. So whereas the volumes are going up, the number of parks that we can put in a drive-through have gone up. On this particular site, we do have that center lane. Whether somebody follows the general rules of striping is, is just nature of somebody's driving, and we really can't, we really can't lend ourselves to say, well, what if someone doesn't follow the rules? Because they're supposed to follow the rules. Those are just the laws of, of driving. If they don't, you know, that's what, you know, they'll, they'll get in trouble elsewhere.
Right.
That center lane is like an overflow for additional drive-through stacking if it's necessary during the peak hours. I don't expect that to be used very often, maybe in the highest of peaks.
That was going to be my next question. How often do you anticipate that really being used? Which, I guess, is a follow-up to the first group of questions in terms of what kind of queuing do you see?
Yeah, and, and generally speaking, when we're looking at drive-throughs and we're looking at traffic and traffic backing up, what we want to make sure we don't do is have traffic backing up onto main roads. This particular layout lends itself where the drive-through entrances are the furthest away from the entrances to the site, which allows us to put more cars on-site and not stack on the roads. Very comfortable feeling that there's not going to be stacking out onto the highways because of how much room we have between the drive-through entrance and the driveway, driveway entrances.
Okay. Let's see if I have any other questions. Typically, what size truck makes deliveries?
WV62. That's a 60, well, it's about a 50-foot trailer, so it's a pretty large truck.
It's a big tractor trailer truck.
Yep.
How does that, will that pull in? How do you anticipate that happening if it's happening during business hours? Where, where does it park? Where does it?
I anticipate it pulling in and parking right where the drive-through lane is, unloading and, and wheeling their, their goods into the store. That's what they do now.
So when you say the drive-through lane, you're talking about the, the one that goes from west to east?
The one in the center, which will allow traffic to go around it as necessary.
The overflow queue line?
Yeah, this is a, this is a temporary situation that, you know, they have to deal with.
Right.
So maybe, maybe they're there for, you know, half an hour to an hour, however long it is, and they'll make their deliveries off-hours. They, they don't want to mess up their own operations.
Sure.
So they'll, they'll deliver when, you know, they're not going to deliver peak times. That's foolhardy if they do, but.
Okay. Okay, I'm, that's all the questions that I have for the moment.
I do. So maybe I'm not understanding correctly or didn't read the plans correctly, but that second drive-through line is not, is going to be grass until you can install it?
The, the inner lane?
Yes, the inner lane.
The inner lane will be grass.
Okay.
Until such a time for one Taco Bell comes up with the technology to be able to add that second line.
Okay, so that's not even going to be existing, and we don't know when you're going to be able to put it in.
Correct.
Second, so with that being the point, the cars in the initial, the original drive-through lane, if someone, if there is quite a backlog and they're in that queue, if people are pulling in through Creek Street, how are they going to get into the queue?
They're going to have to alternate into the queue. They have stop bars on either sides, and there'll be signage.
So if you have, like, seven people waiting in that queue right there, and one car pulls in, and those seven people have been waiting, they're going to have to let that car in?
Yeah, I mean, it's a possibility. You know, we can, we can talk a lot about hypotheticals. I mean, we have 11 cars that have to stack up in the drive-through before that happens. So more general and normal operations for them, you're not going to see any issues.
Yeah.
You know, 11 cars is quite a lot.
Okay. Yeah, my, that would be my, my big concern would be if it is backed up and then someone is coming in through Creek Street, I could see, and if it's a, you know, 1:00 in the morning kid getting some tacos and there's a bunch of kids, I could see it.
Yep.
Being an issue.
I mean, most layouts and most drive-throughs have something similar in nature where everybody's coming through a parking lot and they merge at some point to get into the drive-through. There's more than one access point to these drive-throughs.
Right.
So, so you have to merge at some point. Most people are generally good people and will allow people to merge.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are some people that won't, but we, again, we can't account for, for everybody's personal, you know, their personality and how they act.
So, but again, back to the additional drive-through lane, you have, you don't know if that's going to be needed or if you're going to have the technology or when you're going to have the technology.
I think, once the technology is available, we would likely seek, we have to seek approval from Taco Bell to be able to build a second drive-through, first of all.
Right.
And then, once they grant that approval, we would then start. But whether that's two years from now or five years from now, that I don't know.
Okay, no timeline. Got it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. The num, the, the seating in the building, how many are you planning?
Generally, we have, the seating is generally between 40 and 50 seats. I don't know if we've done a furniture plan.
Can you?
Sorry. Yeah, generally, the seating is.
Chris is a mic hog.
Generally, the seating's between 40 and 50 seats. I don't think we have done a, a formal furniture plan yet for the interior.
And my only other question, the, the additional, I see the 16 parking spots on-site. The remaining 46 on the outlet building, I assume those would be the spots that are facing the Taco Bell?
Say that again, the, the remaining 46?
The remaining 46 would be the spots that are facing the Taco Bell and then maybe the ones on the periphery on that site?
So there's, there's 16 along the front of the Taco Bell or on the south side of the Taco Bell, and then immediately across the drive aisle, there's another 17. There's eight in the back on Creek Street, and then there is 16, 21 over on Empire Boulevard.
Okay, and the entrance to the outlet, is that facing the Taco Bell? I, if I remember that layout, I think it is. Okay.
I think, I think you're correct. I think there's a door in the middle.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
There's no outdoor seating here, correct?
Correct, no outdoor seating.
Okay, I'd like to open it up at this time to the audience and anybody watching. If you're watching and would like to call in, you can call in at 585-340-8771. Alternatively, go to the website, penfield.org, and submit something electronically. There should be a link to this meeting on the homepage. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? Let me just quicken, check to see if we have any calls. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Can I just ask, any thoughts to share with the zoning board as far as the variances?
We will be putting a tabling resolution together about this. I, the zoning board has their own process and their own opinions on things. We can certainly, we'll have to discuss in our work session how we, what we want to address with that. You know, I can see personally the signage. I do have some concerns about traffic flow. Whether or not those are much ado about nothing, I don't, I don't know. But there are definitely, this is not a typical site that we've seen in terms of traffic flow and size and how we generally like to see things go. So there's, again, in my view, and I'm only one member, but there's, there's some significant asks on this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Doug, would you like to read the second application?
All right. Application number three, Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Heritage Christian Services, request Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan and subdivision approval for the proposed construction and operation of a 3,700 square foot, one-story, six-bed home on a 1.3-acre parcel to be subdivided from the existing 2.7 acres located at 2730 Atlantic Avenue. The properties now are formerly owned by Heritage Christian Services and Zod residential R120, application number 22P-0011, SBL number 124.01-1-2.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Lucas Bushin from Marathon Engineering. I have Dan Stewart here from Heritage Christian Services. As you mentioned, we're looking to discuss the proposed home at the corner of Scribner and Atlantic. This home will look and operate in just the same way as a Heritage Christian home that was built recently over on Jackson Road next to Penfield Presbyterian Church. That, from an engineering standpoint, this home will be actually quite a bit simpler. The utilities are right there. I don't know if you remember that project, but it was set further back from the road and there was some unique access. This one is, of course, directly on Scribner. An 8-inch water main that will connect to right on Scribner Road, same with an 8-inch gravity sewer. There is a public town-owned storm sewer along Atlantic Ave that will connect to. There's actually a bit of a draw along the middle of the site, a drainage ditch, coming from the north, which is the middle school, and it comes through the site and discharges to a catch basin just along Atlantic Ave. So it will be directing stormwater to that and maintaining stormwater flow across the property. The existing property is two times what you see there. So the area to the right or to the east is currently part of the same lot. It's around 2.5, 2.6 acres. So as part of the application, we're seeking a subdivision to separate, to cut it in half essentially, and to make the western lot usable for the proposed home. But the portion of the east, the, the home will remain. It's a residential home with a detached garage. And one of the comments that came up through the review process, we've received comments from town staff and county review, and I think there's three I'd like to, to talk about. And one of those was in relation to that garage. The rear setback is currently 12 feet. It's an existing setback. We're not changing the rear line. The rear line being the one towards the school. So it just says sort of a formality to legalize that, that setback. We're going to be going to the zoning board to obtain that variance. Unfortunately, that was caught in the review process and not upfront. So that'll be next month that we go there and get that. But my understanding is that that should be straightforward. Again, we're not changing anything with respect to that setback. So it's just something that we're going to correct as part of creating a subdivision on that property. The other comment was in relation to the storm sewer, which I talked about briefly. Because the town of Penfield standards are more stringent than the DEC or even the Oronacoy Collective, Oronacoy Bay Collective, we will be introducing some, some stormwater treatment to the property just to sort of address stormwater quality for the roof leaders and what's coming off the new impervious. So there'll be a rain garden type treatment facility. I don't know if you're, the board's familiar with that, but it's basically a way to allow stormwater to filter through the ground before it discharges to the storm sewer. And one of the last comments was in relation to the access to this site. So we've, we've got sort of a looped-style access, which is also similar to the Jackson Road home. Of course, the separation from the public road made that home unique. But in this lot, the northern is a standard two-way in and out. It's the driveway that leads you to the garage, right? So it's wide enough for you to go both ways. And then the southerly is just an entrance. And that sort of allows vehicles that are dropping off someone to pull up to the front of the home and to let someone off on the sidewalk there. So there was a comment about the proximity of that entrance only to the intersection of Scribner and Atlantic. So we have some flexibility in terms of how we can adjust that and potentially make it satisfactory to the town. We're going to pursue that and try to get to a point where the, the town staff is comfortable with it. But that is ongoing. That's something that we're working on. So those are the three, I would say, significant comments that were made through the review process. So if there's any questions about how the home functions or the site plan, we can talk, we can talk to them. So thanks for your time and we'll turn it back to you guys.
Okay. Kelly, would you like to start us off?
I would. Thank you for your presentation. So I have three kids who go to Bay Trail, and that road gets jam-packed every day. I'm there every day and every day. It is kind of a mess. So I appreciate your comments about moving the entrance point further away from the intersection. Have you waited? Have you, you know, drove, driven down that road during school hours yourself to see the traffic?
Yes, I also have three children that have been through the Penfield district. And yes, periodically, we did drop them off. We did encourage them to take the bus. But yes, we understand the traffic flow in there. We will adjust our staffing, just like everybody else does, going up and down through that intersection the best we can. You know, we had a proposal here last year, the year before, for a childcare center, and it was similar conversations with that also. But once again, there are times that you could take a left out of that school all day long. But I agree with you, there are certain times of the day you need to know when those are to best accommodate your schedules.
So when you had mentioned moving that entrance down a little bit, have you thought, I mean, just a rough idea of what that would look like?
Yeah, it'd be about five or 10 feet. And one thing I'd, I'd say about the secondary entrance is it's not going to change. Obviously, the volume of traffic is going to change how it accesses the site and marginally. Because the separation between the two access points is 50, 80 feet. So I understand, you know, when we say two, two access points, sometimes that, that can raise eyebrows. It doesn't change, again, the volume of traffic or how much traffic is coming in and out. It makes some maneuvers simpler is, is supposed to be the idea behind it. So in effect, I'd say that secondary access doesn't impact traffic.
And that's just going to be a one-way, the first entrance?
Yeah.
Both ways?
Yeah, and only, it's only wide enough for one way.
Gotcha.
So mostly, you won't see that being used.
The other aspect of that was to avoid backup alarms on some vehicles was the objective of trying to get that in there.
Sure. And you said six-bedroom home?
Yes, it's the same design as the 1867 Jackson Road, so six-bedroom, two and a half bath, two living rooms. It will have an office, medroom, laundry room, larger kitchen. But, you know, the exact same drawing, working, working the same architects and engineers on it.
And I'm assuming, obviously, medical transport vehicles in and out throughout the day?
There may be typically, I would assume, between one and four staff, depending on, we have not identified exactly who will be in this home yet.
Okay.
So once we have, you know, the needs of the people, we'll drive that. There may be transportation to pick people up, to go to day program and/or work. There may be clinical staff coming in. We did accommodate for additional parking because at the picture that you see there of Jackson Road, we were able to share with the church. So we did increase the number of parking spaces and widen out the, the travel lanes in there to accommodate additional vehicles.
Okay.
And I think we're comfortable with the numbers that we have there.
Can you go back to the original? Thank you. Three parking spaces in this location, in this facility?
I believe we showed 12. Three to the north of the two-way, and then there's...
Diagonal parking spaces? Gotcha.
And then two in front of the garage?
And then, okay.
We also have good relationship with the church, the Christian Reformed Church. If we were to host a bigger event, you know, that it would be possible either to shuttle people and/or walk to the, the church.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Dan, could you do me a favor and describe? So let's say, how many of these homes do you operate throughout the region?
Heritage, right now, I oversee about 124 facilities. 75 are, I'll say, group settings. This particular design, we have approximately 15 between the Rochester region and Buffalo region. This has become our, since 1008 State Road, this has been, become our new model because of the ability of the supervision levels and what have you. The design of the house materialized into this, this layout here. So this is what we have been going forward in. And like I said, at this point, probably we have built 15 of them.
So do you have experience with 15 similar operations? Extremely similar operations?
Very similar.
And then 75 overall group homes?
Correct.
With different levels of similarity?
Different levels, maybe two-story, maybe in the community more than this house or out in the suburbs?
So, you know, I think probably a, a big concern is traffic. The busiest one, typically on a given day, how many cars are entering and exiting? How many medical vehicles, you know, Kelly mentioned ambulances and things like that? What are we looking at as far as what you've experienced with?
If I had to say?
The 15 other ones and 75 total?
If I assume four people in the morning to, between the 6 o'clock and 8 o'clock hour to get people up out of bed, fed, on their way to work, more likely they're going to start 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. There may be a clinical staff or two that may come in through the day. There may be somebody there at 8:30 to bring them to their program.
So is that, all right, 6 o'clock in the morning, somebody shows up in a private vehicle, starts making breakfast and getting everybody up?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, through the day, maybe two or three different people in there. Typically, we do our own shopping. We don't have a lot of delivery vehicles bringing stuff into the homes. That might be a little different now with COVID. But, you know, and then same thing in the evening. There may be somebody dropping people off for work. Hopefully, it's more than one person per vehicle, but I can't tell you exactly what that might be. Typically, they might arrive back home between 3:30 and 4:00 is what I would, our typical programs run. Get ready for dinner and unwind for the evening. You know, they may go out, they may catch a, a ballgame or something. So there might be some exits in and out of there. We would probably have a shift change or reduce down at 11 o'clock at night. There's typically a person awake on the overnights 24 hours a day. Depending on the needs, once again, maybe two. And then once again, start again the next morning at 6:00 with additional people showing up.
Overall percentage of residents that have their own vehicles?
I believe we have two in our, that do drive in our agency.
Two throughout the 75?
Yes, and those are very independent homes. And I would, this, this is a certified six-bed home. The people that do drive live in what we call our customized residential options. So they're more in the community and we have some supports that come into them.
So when the people who live here get up and go to work, they're getting on a shuttle and the shuttle's taking them to work? They're not driving themselves?
Correct. No, they would not be driving themselves based on the needs of the individuals that will be served in this home. They may be transported on one of the two vehicles that we will supply to the house. They may have a day program that's in the area that may stop by and pick them up. Or they may have a work, somebody come in, a lifeline, I'll say, to, to pick them up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. You mentioned a rain garden. Where is that proposed to go?
It'll be on the south side of the house. You can see that grass space, yeah, right in that area before it enters the, the wood line and the swell to the...
Will that have water in it all the time?
No.
Okay.
No, only after a rain event.
For, I guess, depends on the size of the rain event, but typically...
Typically, 24 hours is what they're designed to hold.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Variances, any variances?
Just the one pre-existing for that garage setback on the, on the other parcel? Yeah, the, the proposed home falls within all the setbacks.
And you're going to clear out that whole lot, that one lot, and then you're going to, you've got nice vegetation around there now. Are you going to, are you going to?
Leave whatever we can, Jerry. There's not a lot of trees there. They're boxwood or they're overgrown old pines. There's only one or two trees that we had identified on the last application.
Right.
The one sits right in the middle of the driveway, and it's not a very nice-looking sugar maple.
Yeah, there are some rough trees in there. You're going to do a landscaping?
We should not be required to do a landscaping based on a single-family residential. We will, in heritage fashion, we will make this look nice with landscaping. We will, in Heritage fashion, we will make this look nice with landscaping.
What about your traffic plan from last time? You going to update that at all, or you're just going to write it out? Okay. Okay, and then you're just going to separate the lots to keep the house up right now? Or you got any plans for that?
Our plan is more than likely, we will sell the existing farmhouse is what our intention would be. We wouldn't look to build anything else there. There is also a buildable lot to the east of that. So there's enough to meet code, to bank that into two, a three-lot subdivision.
Okay, the sidewalk?
Existing.
All existing, you're all set there? And you're going to move the, keep the one driveway open for in and out, right? The fire one down?
Yeah.
To the school? I think that's it for my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Bob, any?
I'm good.
Good? Okay. I have, looks like, two people who've signed up. And I'd like to open it up for public comment at this point in time. What we'd like to have you do is, when I, I'll call the first two people off the sheets of paper and then open it up to people raising, you might be one of the people who signed up. But if you would, please, come up to this table. Make sure you speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear. And give us your name and address for the record and address your comments to the board. So the first person would be Bob, and please forgive me if I butcher your last name, Ansaldi. Right, I'm one for one so far.
Good evening. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Bob Ansaldi, 10 Oatsfield Circle. It's about a half mile north of this proposal. Most of my comments really go to what Kelly was talking about, having to do with traffic. It's not just going up Scrivner Road during school time. Try to go up Scrivner Road between 7:50 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. And I think there's a similar period, 2:30 or something, 3 o'clock. It is just ridiculous. You can wait, the school buses come flying out of there, and they don't stop. So it very much scares me, anything that will make that situation worse, including a staff member trying to turn left off of Scrivner into that new site could just cause gridlock for 10 minutes. Just someone trying to turn left because there's no place to move. So I don't know how to solve that, but it is definitely a concern for me. I'm also concerned about the cars coming off of Atlantic and that close entrance, not realizing there's going to be a car there and slamming into them. So as for construction, please make sure that there's no construction vehicles being parked out on the street. Because again, anything out on that street is just going to be a problem from my point of view. I don't completely understand how the whole operation works, but maybe they've got enough parking. But anything that would cause, like during staff change or anything like that, would cause anyone to try to park out on Scrivner Road, I'd almost prefer to see, like, no parking signs or something. Because we just can't have, in my opinion, anything blocking traffic out there. Similar, you know, it sounds like there's enough parking, but I don't think it's a Heritage group home down on Hatch. But we continually have a problem with that group home in the winter, plowing their snow out onto the road. Because they don't have enough parking or enough place to put their snow. So if there's, you know, I just hope that this plan allows for plenty of place to put all of that snow so that there's no chance it's going to get plowed out onto the street. I guess that covers most of my comments on this particular application.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then one just open comment to the board. I am a member of the Penfield Trails Committee, and I certainly encourage you to always, on all applications where appropriate, to take into account, think about where easements and stuff for trails. We very much appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person would be Mark Northrup.
Good evening. Thanks so much for my, this opportunity to talk to you tonight. Appreciate it. I'm Mark Northrup. I live across the street with my family across this proposed development here at 1777 Scrivner Road. Forgive my nervousness. I care very much. I've said this before, when speaking front, public speaking, it's nerve-wracking. In the interest of preserving time, my aim is obviously to speak quickly, to tell you what I know. I can email my thoughts for perusal at a later time. I grew up on, off Aspen Drive, around the corner from the former Mary Carriola Center off Broncroft Boulevard. And I'm a supporter of group homes in our community. I speak tonight, obviously, to address problems with the proposed subdivision, but without any malice towards people with special needs in our community. If the plans for the group home were to be placed where the existing residence is located on the land, I would have little for which to be concerned. I wish to speak about traffic, vehicular accidents at the intersection of Scrivner and Atlantic. I'd like to speak about the intention of use for this property, noting problems with the architectural plan posted online. These drawings that are given were obviously not what I was going off of. And these are a little bit different from what I was using about a week ago. And then there's some malignant care of the existing domicile at this address, which I'd at least like to address. I've spoken on some of these points to the board, previously to the planning boards. Last time they were here, Heritage employed a fraudulent traffic study to attempt to confuse members of the board regarding the actual drivers using the road and the volume of traffic. And by documenting these infractions, it's the ethical thing to do. Now, no one at Heritage Christian or their architectural firm lives at this property. All of their drawings are overlaid on these digital maps, and no one goes there. For two years, the site has been poorly cared for. While subdividing the land may bring in minimal tax revenue to the town, the problems it will also bring to those using the road will be abundant. My thoughts tonight are representative of hundreds of residents using Scrivner Road, as the gentleman previously said. Each day to provide care for their children and picking up and dropping off the only public middle school in our town. Scrivner Road is the only artery access for this vital work with which hundreds of parents are engaged. As a neighbor to the school, I view with benevolence their activities. I have children under the age of five but will soon join them with their commutes as my children grow and develop. Our focus, I believe, with the board must be on this essential road as we have a major project coming up in motion in the general vicinity, one that was voted upon by the public and will be funded by our community. The board must consider the proposed subdivision of 2730 Atlantic and how much it will complicate our corners as they are congested. For the safety of pedestrians and drivers, the development of these specific entryways and exits on Scrivner Road here must be forbidden. I have some photos I'll send in of some car accidents that have occurred here at this corner. There's caution tape that still remains at one of the corners based on an extraction that was made by emergency services at the corner. Trees are still scarred from the vehicles that crashed there. Now, the speed limit on Wayland and Scrivner is 35 in the area, but the people who travel from Wayland Road onto Scrivner often drive much faster, especially when they get a green light. When an aerial view is given of Scrivner and Atlantic, it shows that former town planners have provided existing curb cuts to keep the ingress at this property reasonable from the hazardous intersection. Adding ones closer would be dangerous to others. In the proposed plan, engineers have brought both entryways closer to Route 286 and the Scrivner intersection. Now, I looked up on this National Association of Transportation Officials website about speed distances, and I will obviously provide that as well to you. There's a chart based on speed limits and the amount of distance it takes to slow a car down. I measured the distance from the corner, and there's a minimum distance of 136 feet for cars driving the speed limit to slow down based on reaction time and actual vehicle slowing down. Marathon's new entry at the south is less than 76 feet from the right-of-way of Atlantic, and people speed through it more than 40 miles per hour in this area. Here is again where fraud is being used to confuse planning board members and by a public, obviously by a firm Heritage has hired. We cannot assume that the existing entryway is valid. Their design changes what is currently existing. If you were to look at that entryway that has both ingress and egress points, that's actually moved closer down, the one that's existing on the property. They're looking to change that, obviously. From the drawings as well, the trees were not there. So it's a little confusing, but that, I know they're working to mitigate that. But what you look at currently is not what, they're going to change the whole thing. At no time has anything but the bare minimum been enacted in terms of upkeep of the property across the street. Their fire hydrant is buried in snow with each winter storm. Why would the board approve a new building for special needs residents if their property caretakers are incompetent? Boarded-up doorways, the lack of electrical illumination at any hour indicates a derelict and unoccupied and uncared-for home. Instead of repairing the existing building, we, as community members, have an application to build new next door, and they'll continue to ignore the existing building. What's to be done with it? We heard that question. I don't know if it's able to be even sold off, other than through foreclosure. One would think, based on previous denials or methods, would have changed. Instead, they've doubled down on negligence at this home. Regarding their planning, little's been taken into consideration for the unique attributes of the general neighborhood on Scrivner and Atlantic. One might think the corporation seeks to build cheaply as possible. I question whether materials would really be possible and if they'll be able to execute the project in these times. I would like to see any installation of berms to protect pedestrians in the area. If development were to ensue, landscaping needs to be created in the plan and added to beautify the property. Obviously, screens of variety populate the area and would complement the area. Boards have the right to require plantings and trees to ensure privacy and matching aesthetics. Once Marathon Engineering Firm has figured out how to use the existing building and create a proper traffic pattern, they should be capable of providing landscaping plants. I think that's completely reasonable. I believe they made a really bad investment. They don't know what to do with the property, and their poor planning without consideration of traffic is not our town's problem right now. The area is owned residential, not mixed-use for businesses to operate. And a 30, I noticed the drawings that were submitted, the 3,700-square-foot building, that'll be pretty sprawling. If Heritage were interested in building, they should do so in a different location. I know there's property out at 250 and Atlantic Avenue, where over 45 acres have been for sale for many years, over a decade. So I know planning board members visit sites under review to gain perspective. The intersection in question has been bottlenecking occurring. Frequent traffic has stopped near the elementary school, sometimes backing up the length of the street. I don't want to see parents, I don't think anybody would want to see parents standing in cars inside a group home parking lot as drivers become desperate to pick up their kids, especially on inclement weather days or for special events. The schools are certainly stressed enough, and burdening them to hire more traffic monitors is unreasonable. The only solution is to deny the subdivision and require Heritage to use the site entry as it was intended on Atlantic Avenue. Please don't add more chaos to an already challenging environment for parents and employees of the Penfield Schools or for residents, obviously, who live in our community. Thank you for hearing me through my nerves. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Gary Fain, my wife Princess, 1751 Scrivner Road. Traffic, that's what you've been hearing mostly from this project, traffic. We live on that road. And the town, through their planning, traffic has increased over the last 30 years since we've been there tremendously. And since COVID, with the way the school runs now, four times a day, you've got lines backed up. If an emergency vehicle has to come through there, you know, there's going to be problems. You're adding a, you're zoning it residential, but it's a business, you know? One of the things this town has done great on is keeping businesses away from residential. This is already a bad intersection, and you're adding a business that's going to have, how many cars going in and out? You got 12 spaces? You know, I can see somebody trying to make a left-hand turn to get on Atlantic at 8 o'clock in the morning. When schools come in, they're not going to get out. There's going to be problems. Traffic, it's traffic. It's the wrong place for this, period. I don't have anything more to add than that. It's just not a, they toned it down from their, two years ago, from what they wanted to build there, but it's still too many cars. It's not a residential house. It's not a house with three, four people living in it. It's a six-bedroom business where you've got vehicles coming in and out throughout the day. When the school opens, that's only a piece of it. All day, there's traffic coming down, up and down it. It's a secondary road that's almost as busy as Atlantic Avenue now with all the housing that's gone up. It cuts you through all the way to Webster. It's gotten too busy, and you've done nothing for the speed limit. 50, 60 miles an hour is common, common, any time of day. 20 miles an hour during school? No. Put someone out there. It's 50, 60 miles all day long. You've done nothing in this town to alleviate the speed limit in front of that school during school alone. Call troopers, nobody does anything. They sit there and they let them go by. And Mark is right. They come through that light on Wayland, and they're flying. And somebody wants to turn out, there's going to be accidents. I've done that. That entrance and exit is too close to the light. There's no way you can do it. It's too close. That whole parcel's too close to the light. And the last thing is with your drainage, if you've gone out there, unless you're going to bring in a lot of fill, that's a swell. That's, that whole parcel's deep. It's holding water now. So, you know, I'm not sure what the plan is as far as drainage. I know you mentioned the rainforest or whatever. But that's an issue too there on that corner.
Just want to commend you because the traffic is overflowing on Scrivner Road. I have contacted the town several times. They have put up a speed sign, but that has not helped at all. I commend my neighbor, Mr. Northrup, because, you know what? He's telling the truth. Why do the traffic have to come out on Scrivner Road? If you have a relationship with Christian Heritage Church, Christian Reformed Church, then why couldn't you work out something with them as far as the entrance and the exit for your development here? Like my husband said, we have seen so much going on there, and speed is a factor. 60, 65 miles an hour daily at any given time on that road. And you know what? We're kind of fed up with it. And to put, I have nothing against disabilities.
Which I'm sure this happens everywhere. You know, speed is bad, you know? But it's a school district, you know? You've done nothing. This town has done nothing. You've done, you've done more on, with the speed lumps on Huntington Meadows, you know, than you've done in the school today. Not that I want speed limits, speed bumps, but it's getting, it's getting bad. I'm surprised there's not more accidents during school time. Sit out there at 7:30, 8 o'clock when people are flying to drop their kids off.
And the bus drivers are not an exception because they speed too.
So adding a business on a busy corner, I'm sorry, too many cars. Put a house with two, three cars, that's plenty. But this is a business. Keep it away from residential. It's already, you've got the only middle school in this town that every year you seem to be making bigger. And now you're adding this, you know? So that school's only going to get bigger. Scrivner and Bay Trail just keep growing, you know? So it's only getting worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Okay, would anyone else like to, yes, ma'am? Come on up.
Well, if, I mean, we get the traffic, I know is a common concern, so if there's other things, that would be great. Got the message on the traffic.
Elena Kessler, 1719 Scribner Road in Penfield. It is essentially the same thing, and it is the traffic. The parking now to enter the school and exit the school or whatever has begun to leak out into the new development, and now even on the sidewalks that were built for the new development, those have been run over, literally, by cars. So we want to also say that the demand for Heritage Christian Home Services is huge. There's waiting lists, and it's not anything against this organization, but the fact that both of those are jumping out into Scribner Road is a grave concern. So traffic, yes. Speed, yes. But now it's gotten to the point for its safety. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim Fulton, 1759 Scribner Road. I was here a couple of years ago. I live five houses away from the corner, and ditto everything everybody said about traffic. It's gotten even worse with COVID because now I don't think anybody takes a bus, even though the bus is coming and out. What Mark said about, and what my other neighbor said, why that location? Why not closer to the church? I think I would have a lot less problems with it. I support the idea of the homes, you know, and all that. I just don't understand why that has to be coming out on the Scribner. I don't want anything there, quite honestly. I said that from the beginning. I don't know why they bought that lot. I think, I agree, I think it was a mistake, but if they had proposed it closer to the church possibly and shared their parking and all that other stuff. I actually drove by the Jackson Road one today, and I went in there, and I, that's not a bad setup back there. It's private, it's sharing the parking, you know? But I highly disagree with what they're trying to do on the corner and what everybody else said, the safety and the traffic and, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay, let me see if there are any calls. Okay. Anyone else on the board like to have any more questions or comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. This will be tabled tonight, and you'll get a copy of the tabling resolution in a few days. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Doug.
Yeah, okay. Application number four.
Third application.
Nixon Peabody LLP, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, doing business as Verizon Wireless, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and a conditional use permit for the proposed construction and operation of a 124-foot wireless telecommunications facility with a four-foot lighting rod and associated site improvements on an 880-square-foot leased parcel of the 2.88 acres at 1838 Penfield Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Penfield Fire District and Zone Four Corners FC. Application number 22P-0012, SBL number 139.06-2-49.1.
Doug, before they begin, I just want to note for the record that I'm recusing myself on this one. I do expect that the town board will act on special counsel next week so that counsel will be in place for the work session.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Good evening, members of the board. It's nice to see you again. Jared Lusk from Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon Wireless. With me are three additional people. Mike Crosby at the end. He is Verizon Wireless RF Design Engineer for the Rochester area. In the middle is Mike Montalto from Costage Engineering, who is covering for Dave Weisenreider tonight, the project design engineer. And in the lovely orange sweater is Jackie Bartolata, who is Verizon Wireless Real Estate Consultant, helped with the site selection process here. I know it's been a long night. I know we presented before, so unless the board has any questions, I'm going to try to be summary. We did receive additional technical comments, mostly comments from the planning and engineering department, mostly requesting edits to the notes and some signature lines. The one material, I think, request of the board, again, that's been consistent from our previous sketch plan conference, was to add some landscaping to the southern portion of the project. Let me just give it, for those that may be watching at home, again, as stated, Verizon Wireless is proposing 124-foot monopole tower at the Fire District property located with the address of 1838 Penfield Road. We are, it's in the back corner of the property. It's in a relatively small compound area that is going to be roofed with a, that area there. The only, again, just to be clear, the only location that the Fire District made available to us, the only, the only spot that was available, we've been searching for a location for a wireless telecommunications facility in this area of the world since about 2015. Not a, it's desperately needed. We were able, after many years of discussions with the Fire District, to agree on this location. As a result of its location and the surrounding property lines, we need a use variance because it's in the Four Corners District, but secondly, the setback variance is for the tower from the north and the eastern property boundaries. The tower includes, again, the 124-foot tower, four-foot lightning rod is at the top of it, and the equipment cabinets are surrounded by an eight-foot fence and a canopy that looks like a park pavilion roof, for the best way to describe it. Again, since that we were here last, there was the request for additional landscaping. We have an updated plan that we have in front of me, I can show it to you, that we have proposed. We went back to the Fire District, it's their property, there was some additional, excuse me, there was some existing landscaping there, and we have, with their permission, proposed to replace it. There's not a lot of space there, so we have put some evergreen arborvitae bushes along the backside, five of them. Again, I can show you the plan of that, but again, we've been responsive to that, to that comment. But again, that was the only, what I would say, material comment related to the site plan as we move forward. If there's any questions that the board has in the site plan, and then I can just turn it over to Mike Crosby to make a brief presentation as to the, why we're doing this tower in the first place. But again, before we got into that, is there any questions on the site plan?
Do you want to start? No?
I had one, I had one question. I think if we go back to when you folks came in for sketch, and maybe you'll talk about this, one of the things that we discussed was alternate tower designs, possibly a flagpole. I don't know, technology-wise, what some of the possible alternatives would be.
In response to that, and I was going to get to that, the, since the application at sketch, and again, I know we talked about it at various staff meetings, et cetera, we did, we were asked to go back and take a good, hard look at stealth. In your package tonight that I gave you is two things. One of them is the SHIP-O concurrence regarding that the project as a monopole is proposed will not have an adverse impact on historic resources in the area. In addition to that, there's a series of simulated photos. Our package, our application originally, if you were, and Tab N included a number of photos and simulations from various locations. Again, these are worst-case scenarios. If you notice that we took them in leaf-off conditions, this is worst-case scenario, we provided those sims. We have been working with Verizon and RF, and I know in just, at the last meeting, people put the cactus up and things like that. The flagpole just won't work with the antenna designs, and again, if you have specific questions on that, we can have Mike answer those. But we gave you three separate designs that we have used in that simulation package from a couple of key, from a number of views. There is the monopole, again, the galvanized, that we have proposed, again, which is typical, and again, approved by SHIP-O. Secondly, there was a monopole design that was painted thunder gray, it's like a dark gray instead of galvanized. Again, a way to, if the board preferred that, instead of using the galvanized look. And the third, of course, was the monopine. And the monopine, as I said at our last meeting, I urge you to look at those, those simulations, and take a look at it. I said, we use monopines all over the world. Verizon has no issue building monopines. The problem with monopines, where they work best, is when there's the context of other evergreen trees for it to blend in with. I think you'll see from the photos that there's a few places that the monopine would actually look fine, particularly if there were leaves on the trees, but there are, in our view, too many locations where you're looking at it and there is no context for monopines. And in our view and in our experience of municipalities that have complained, it will not get you the results that you're hoping for. So from our perspective, and I think SHIP-O's concurrence, SHIP-O's concurrence, the monopole is the sleekest design, narrowest pole, most appropriate for the location based upon what we have, but we've given you our designs that we think are most feasible in an effort to minimize the overall. The other issue that we have with regard to potential designs is the limited ground space that the Fire District has to provide. We basically are in three parking spots, as you can see there in the corner, and it's, so again, with a combination of visibility and space to be able to put a pole along with the equipment, our options are limited. So to answer your, I'm sorry, answer your question.
The SHIP-O determination, that only applies for national historic landmarks, which the Baptist Church on Penfield Road falls under that category, but there's a whole Four Corners Historic District that goes up and down Five Mile Line. And I don't know if you're aware, but the Historic Preservation Board in Penfield did issue a letter with concerns on this project.
Interestingly, never provided to the applicant, which is interesting.
We did not get that provided out.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'd be happy to review that with a historic consultant on that, but again, can't respond to something we don't yet have.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Sorry to blindside you on that one.
Oh, no, no problem.
Yeah. Okay. I'm good for now.
You want, why don't we finish the presentation and then we can ask?
Okay. Mike, why don't you just provide a brief?
I can share this, my screen, or, you know, I'm not sure where the Wizard of Oz is that's pulling the strings with the presentation button. If we could go to the RF justification? I could. Yeah, I have it ready. Okay.
We realize that most of this information is going to be presented at the ZBA for the basis for the use variance and the area variances in the first instance, but we wanted to provide this board with a summary, background information about why we're doing what we're doing. Go ahead, Mike.
Just waiting for it to come up on the screen here. While we're waiting for that to come up on the screen.
Yeah, while we're waiting, what is the height? Do you know what the height of the poles on Turk Hill by the Parenton Rec Center are?
I don't.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but that's something we could certainly, at the next meeting, come back with the heights of all the adjacent sites, if that's helpful.
That, and also, there's a, there is a flagpole cell tower on East Henrietta and 390. What's the height of that?
Again, I don't know the height of that one, but they're usually in the 80 to 100-foot range for flagpoles.
Okay.
It's just typical height for flagpoles. Real quick on flagpoles, just since that's a topic. Flagpoles are something that we've used in the network historically. Technology has changed significantly since we use those. In the modern LTE network that we're using now, there's remote radio heads, the actual radios that actually power the antennas, are located at the antennas. That didn't used to be the case. We used to have 12, 24, 36 runs of coaxial cable that used to run up inside the flagpoles and all the radio hardware be in the shelter. And we used to use 12-by-24, 12-by-30 shelters for all that equipment. Modern technology, we've been able to cut back on power consumption, we've been able to cut back on the actual footprint. It's somewhat of a greener, a greener footprint because we're not taking up that huge shelter that we've used in the past, so we're actually able to compartmentalize those radios, but they have to be located at the antennas. With flagpoles, there's no room for this equipment. There's radios, there's diplexers, there's, you know, jumper connections. People have to be able to work on it. Flagpoles are not conducive to the modern network, so it's not something that we've been doing in recent years. So just to, just to put that out there, in many of our flagpole sites that we do have, we have a lot down in the Poughkeepsie area. Those are very problematic right now. We're going through terrible growing pains. We're having to go back and actually change the physical structure so that there's actually, you know, several feet bump outs on the sides of the flagpole. Many cases, we have to take the flag off. It's not a cylindrical, straight up and down, you know, tower anymore. It's actually bumped out, so it doesn't look like what it was originally intended to do because it's just not, it wasn't a future-proof type structure. Of course, at the time, nobody could have known these things, but it wouldn't make sense for us to pursue that at this point in time. That's why the tree, although it's not, you know, our favorite thing to do, it is something that allows the physical space necessary for us to actually locate the antennas and the, and there are technical antenna orientation reasons why, without getting into too much detail, that the flagpole also is not conducive because you're actually limited inside of a physical structure. It's the same thing as putting handcuffs on our site. We're not able to make optimization changes and adjust as the network grows, so that becomes a problem for us as well. So, I don't know. If you're not able to get on my computer.
So, we've been asked if you can do a display detect? Do you know how to do that?
Windows P. Windows P.
Yeah, that should switch between your display, exterior display, and both.
Extend.
I, you're like way beyond my.
I know. Well, hopefully he does, because he's like designing all these. What's the distance?
The Windows P did get me an extra menu. I'm able to click on extend. I'm trying to duplicate now.
Mike, what's the distance on this tower if you put it up there? How far will that?
How far does it serve the radius of the site? So, right now, if you were to take the location where this site is located, we're about one and a quarter to one and three quarters of a mile from all of the adjacent sites around it. So this site is designed to cut that distance in half. So you're looking at half mile up to a mile. In some cases, it's not exactly a round circle, the footprint, it's a shaped cell.
Dead zone in Atlantic, Scribner, well, I'll show that whole dead zone from Verizon.
The idea for this is to clean things up around town. And actually, it's a really important point because when this site's activated, hopefully, this site is not just going to improve the users that are within the footprint of this new site, it's actually going to alleviate the over-congested issues that we're having with the adjacent sites and allow them to function as they're designed. All the adjacent sites are overloaded, and so this is actually going to allow them to actually all work together. It offloads new coverage, improved coverage, but also allows those neighboring sites. So it really is a community-wide impact, far beyond just the footprint of this site.
Tech support has arrived.
There he is.
So it really needs, it sounds like it really needs to be a, I guess, full-blown cell site with, I guess, the full capability. I think back, a number of years ago, we approved, and maybe it was just a repeater of some sort that was down at the Panorama Plaza.
Small cell, yep.
Yeah. Okay. Because all that is, is basically a pole with a hat on it.
Yeah, so those, so we have different size sites, different sized solutions, and so, of course, we, you know, the solutions are designed based on what the problem area is. So while we use multiple solutions, one doesn't always work for another scenario. So, of course, down at the Panorama Plaza, we've got a high concentration of utilization. We're able to put in a pinpoint microcell and target a high utilization area. So while we use multiple solutions, one doesn't always work for another scenario. So, of course, down at the Panorama Plaza, we've got a high concentration of utilization. We're able to put in a pinpoint microcell and target a high utilization area. And by itself, it does have an impact. But in the case of the Penfield DT, as we call it, location, this location is a much wider, much larger area, you know, so it's, it is scaled towards a, not towards, but it's scaled exactly as a macro solution. It does allow us to be relatively modest in the height of the tower so that it's not overwhelming to the community. And obviously, that's of our interest. That's one of the things we try to do is minimize the impact of the site. And so, because it's not too large of an area, it's obviously a mature network, but this is a common solution that's taken place, not just throughout Monroe County and Rochester area, but across New York State. Many towns like Penfield, Pittsford, Webster, and others where we have these, if you want, we call them downtown-type areas, it's really a generic term, but if you were to, if you were to look at those areas, the sites that are serving there are so far away that, number one, they don't do a good job in the first place. And partially because of that, they become overloaded, and that just compounds the issue. So by placing the site strategically in the middle of these adjacent cells, it allows us the ability to evenly distribute that traffic that's currently there amongst the three new sectors of the site. If we put this too far north, too far east, too far south, you get the picture, what happens is we actually just really just shift the problem from one existing site to this new site. So if we don't get it right, we end up back here looking for more solutions. And of course, nobody wants that.
Was, was the, on top of the fire hall, there's, there's a structure that's higher. Was that considered as a possible alternative?
It was, and it was not permitted by the, A, I don't know if it was tall enough, but the fire district, it's tall enough, but district was limited in where they would allow us, but it's certainly not the 124 feet tall that we keep.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the height, but it sounds like also the, possibly, the fire district didn't want to, wasn't interested in that.
Did we ask them to go on?
I think it was never tall enough.
Yeah, it was...
Okay, so it was off the table just because of the height? Okay.
So one of the challenges that we have is, we have many different FCC licensed frequencies that allows us to perform our business. Not all of these licenses or the spectrum, the bandwidth, not all of it's created equal. We have some that we call our low bands, has a nice, large coverage footprint. Unfortunately, doesn't have the bandwidth to handle the amount of capacity and users on the network. So as time has gone on, we've, you know, we're always buying up additional spectrum and adding new, new spectrum to the sites to try to handle that capacity. That's part of the FCC plan, is to continue to try to utilize spectrum in that way. Unfortunately, the higher bandwidth spectrum that we've gained over the years is also higher in frequency. And the higher the frequency is, the more challenges there are with propagation characteristics, meaning it doesn't serve as far, doesn't serve in building as easily. And we're continuing to see that evolution take place, and as time goes on, that continues to be one of our leading challenges. And it also, it's a big driver in why we have to be in a specific location, because if we get it wrong and those, the spectrum that's available to us, it has the capacity to solve these problems, it's not able to properly serve those areas or distribute the traffic onto the multiple resources we're placing out there, that's, that's why we don't solve the problem, and that's, that's what drives us. So the engineering aspect of this is a balancing act of trying to get the site in the right location that's going to do the job, try to keep it short enough that it doesn't upset anybody, or we have a minimal impact at least, and obviously solve the problems so we don't have to come back in the future and do this again.
Have you considered, is there a possibility to do multiple shorter, smaller towers versus one bigger tower?
So we've looked at that scenario, and, you know, you're talking about dozens of locations where there's not existing structures now. So while they're smaller, and they may seem more palatable, what happens is we end up in more and more neighborhoods, less and less commercial areas. And as you do that, those are going to be on somebody's corner of their lawn out in front of their house. And we'll pack this room, the standing room only, if we were to go down that path, when we have a less intrusive way to solve the problem. And so that's something that we look at. We try to balance those interests in the beginning to try to get off on the right foot and make sure that we lead with our best foot forward. And so we do know from experience that, you know, while that's something that we've looked at, it's not something that is appropriate for this location, if, if something of this nature is available.
Again, we've been looking, I did our first zoning analysis on the town of Penfield, and we're at a tower here in 2015, when I was a much younger man with not-so-white hair. And we, since then, with, again, the fire district was a long time getting them to an agreement, and as you look at our site selection reports, there just isn't available sites, and it's complicated, this area. There's a lot of residential homes. The school district wants, wanted nothing to do with it, a lot, and they just said no. And, and so, we looked at the alternatives of potentially small cells, but again, going through neighborhood streets where utilities are buried, and now placing utility pole out in front of people's houses, we determined, A, it was going to be impractical because there was going to need to be so many of them. But again, are we just, when we looked at this and looked at where the location, that we thought it was the most feasible location, given the alternative.
You mentioned the school district. I know that's in close proximity. The Finney School site, was there any?
They did not want...
They also were, okay.
I urge you to look at the site selection report at Tab G. We, of the report. It's all the properties in the vicinity. Again, some people, some properties, we went back multiple times again because we weren't making any progress, including the fire district site. But the Finney School was a hard no.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, this was very helpful. I was just taking a look at it.
We did talk about some of the concepts, so I can go through this quicker than I was originally planning to do, so if you can give me just a minute to do so.
Yeah, so you have control now.
Along with some of the concepts we were discussing.
Mike likes to be in control, so.
So, this is the beginning of this particular presentation, and we put this in here because all of the sites that we talk about throughout the justification of the, of the new project, we show those in this slide, and it just helps to orient the reader so that they can associate these overloaded sites that we talk about in the presentation with their physical locations. And so this is an overview slide. You can see in the middle of the screen, you can see this red circle. That's the, that's what we call the search ring. The search ring is a communication device that the engineering group uses to communicate with our real estate group, to let them know that this is the area that we'd like you to focus your efforts on. Obviously, it's a logical step. Generally, throughout that area, you know, we're expecting that we're going to be able to try to make something work. That doesn't mean that a 120-foot centerline or 124-foot tip of tower is what would work throughout that whole search ring. You know, it could be because of terrain or additional trees or something in the area that you might need a taller tower, and that's usually the case. So because we're located close to the district that's in question, it allows us to try to keep that tower height low, low as possible, while staying above the trees so that the site is still able to perform properly for those higher frequencies. So a couple, just a couple notables here. Linden Ave site, that serves into the area, the project area. The East Rochester site here down in the southwest part, that serves into the project area. The Fairport site gets up into the project area. And Harris Hill, which is to the east, and I think everybody's familiar with the Harris Hill location, that one also serves in the project area. So as we jump through some of these slides, just keep those in mind, because those are the sites that while they currently provide some level of service in the area, those sites are all overloaded. So we'll, we'll see that as we go through. And I'm going to, I'm just going to jump through, you know, quick some of these slides and just try to get to some example slides we could talk about. I talked about the different frequencies that we have, the different licensed spectrum. We use two representative bands to try to help visualize what that problem is. In this particular slide, while it may be difficult to see, the higher line is actually purple in color. That represents our lower frequencies. And on the left side of the chart, you have our percent utilization with the red dash line that goes across the center of the screen being our 100% utilization threshold. The, the bottom line shows you the time over the last year, so it gives you a year's worth of trending data that helps you to visualize what the utilization is on these different carriers, or, I shouldn't use word carriers because that could be confusing, but the different spectrum that we have available. And what's common is the lower frequencies are able to penetrate into these buildings at a longer distance. And that's where a lot of the utilization comes from, the overloads of network. But interestingly here, even though we talked about the distance of the sites, because the sites aren't, you know, extremely far away, we're actually seeing overutilization on the, the higher frequencies as well, which means that we're having traffic exhaustion on low and our mid-frequencies. What that means is part of this coverage challenge is what we call network densification. Network densification is where we're, you know, that we're fixing a coverage issue, we're fixing a capacity issue on those lower frequencies, and we're also densifying the network by placing the site strategically in the right location so that it fixes not just this particular coverage area of the new site, but as we mentioned, it actually helps to lift the community as a whole. So all these neighboring sites are going to improve their performance as well. So that's important to, to look at this project is much further reaching than just the service area of the new site. This is community-wide for Penfield and sites that are outside of Penfield that are currently tasked with serving Penfield. And so, we, we give a couple different flavors of these capacity KPIs, and we just run through it for each sector. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. You can take as much time as you like to take a look through there. But it's the same theme that you usually see through these slides, and it's really to, to help us bolster the record with detailed information about all the neighboring sites and the condition that they're in. Some of them, obviously, are going to be much worse than others.
Well, that area issue about Mike, I see you have one in Atlantic and Wayland. I mean, it's less than a half a mile, and it's a dead zone, all along Atlantic and Cultural, so it's, it kind of caught my eye there, you know, from firsthand knowledge.
Yeah, Atlantic and Wayland, so, you're talking about on Wayland Road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's where this...
Yeah, it has, has terrain and foliage challenges that actually block that site from serving down there. So that's, that's what happens when we, you know, are not able, you know, some of the sites we pick, you know, we don't have any choice, and it has a situation where it maybe only serves half of the area that we'd love for it to serve, but it's just geography doesn't allow for that. So you have to have plans on how you fix that in the future. That particular site is blocked by terrain. So you will see that in the upcoming coverage slides. Apologize, I clicked the wrong button. All right, so we get into coverage description, so, so that was a little bit about capacity. We'll talk a little bit about coverage. So of course, we're going to look at coverages in two different ways. One is what we call best server. That's the entire footprint that this particular sector in question is serving. And then the signal strength. How usable is that signal strength for various usage, you know, whether it be in somebody's basement, on the second floor, outside, in the car? Obviously, if we don't have, if we have a best server footprint, but it's not strong enough to serve in these locations where the utilization is taking place, we're not going to be able to solve the problem unless we get that signal strength strong enough to do that. This is the search area zoomed in that we saw on the first slide. Gives you a little bit better detailed view. So this is the best server slide. So this is, again, the same image that you saw on the first screen. However, you're now seeing each of the sectors that were listed, detailed in the capacity section. I've given them a different color so that you can see where they're serving, so that as we look at those capacity problems, you can have a visual representation of how this new site is strategically located in the middle of where the breakpoint is between all of those sectors. They all come to a centralized area, more or less. And you can see that's why we positioned the search ring for certain reasons in that area. And then you can see the same slide with the new site on air at that same frequency. So again, this is the lower frequency that we talked about. So that area where you have four different sectors serving right now is going to be served by three new sectors over a much smaller geographic area, which also allows those adjacent colors that you see right now to actually be contained a little bit. And that's where that community-wide benefit comes from, because we're actually able to offload those.
The Harris Hill, the Harris Hill one seems to have two sharp lines. Is that just because it's broken off there for the purposes of...
Yeah, you can see...
This particular application, or does that go 360 degrees?
So, depending upon which antennas are in use, we have what we call fast roll-off antennas. We can get a really fine line between the sectors. Doesn't mean that the cell edge, the far distant edge of the cell, is going to be a fine line, but when you see it between sectors, the finer that line is, the better ability we have to prevent our own sectors from interfering with each other. Too much overlap, and we end up with interference which degrades the network. But you'll see those straight lines also, you know, over in this area, and also down here on that Fairport site. So that's a good thing, you know, those straight lines, and that's, that's really how it works. It just has a good line of sight in that area that allows it to take place.
He's just showing you the coverage from that one antenna. Remember, there's three antennas, so collectively, it's in theory 360 degrees, so you're seeing like 120 if it's designed that way.
Got it.
So this slide here, you wouldn't be able to tell anything about the signal strength. But when we jump to this slide here, same slide, same sites on air, but it gives you the picture that you can better understand, that we're in that negative 95 to negative 105 signal strength, which doesn't allow us for adequate in-building situ, coverage in a lot of places. But again, this is the...
Green is good here?
Green is, yes, the darker the green, the better it is. The yellow and brown is our, is the weaker signal strength. You could compare that to bars on your phone, you know, you're down in that one, two-bar range, and we know how that works. This is the addition of the new site. And you could see, you know, it's, it's an appropriate-sized site. It's not too big, it's not too small. You know, we don't want to get below the tree line because that would really end up confining the sites. We've got to have adequate level above the trees, not just the trees that are immediately adjacent to it, but the trees that surround the site in the, in the near area. Now we're switching, we're back to that first slide we looked at, but it's with the higher frequency. So you start to see some gap areas, some white areas. So the mid-band doesn't serve this entire area, and it's that best server that we talked about. And you can actually see where we talked about over in Panorama where some of those small cells are, you can see where those actually kick in on this slide, because those are, small cells are typically limited to only the mid-band frequencies, they're not typically low-band. So that's one of the other main differences when we talk about a group of small cells versus a macro. You have to have a macro serving the area because the macro has the ability to have all these different licensed spectrum on it, whereas the small cells, because of their very small footprint, small space, they don't have the ability to have all these services. So there are certain advantages when we talk about the macro for an area like this. And it is appropriate because there's, there are gaps currently there.
Are the, are the lower-frequency ones, over time, because the bandwidth is not as wide, are those going to be obsoleted in the future?
No, it's interesting how, how the technology's evolved, and a lot of this has to do with the technicalities of, you know, the hardware vendors that we work with. We're advancing the technology all the time, and it's really quite an amazing thing to see happen. When I first started in the business, it was just a simple analog voice phone call. We had cool phones in our cars that you could have over the speaker of the radio, and, you know, we thought we, we thought that was all it was. But obviously, things have changed a lot over time, and what we find now is that all these different, basically, think of it as an all-hands-on-deck scenario. We're using everything that we got, wherever we can have it, and we can actually use this, you know, modulation schemes that we have available to actually aggregate those carriers together. We can actually combine the spectrum so we can actually increase the bandwidth and increase the ability for those signals to work together. You can't do that if you don't have adequate signal strength. And that's what, one of the problems is here, is we don't have adequate signal from these higher frequencies. We can't aggregate them together. That's why it has to be in that particular location. Again, jumping to the signal strength, these are, you know, essentially the bars on your phone. Brown is bad, white is bad, the green is good. So we're in the middle of a problematic area. You can see the Atlantic and Wayland site, how significantly challenged that site is because of the terrain that exists to the south of it and the foliage of the park there. And it, and this is normal for these mid-band frequencies, they're so much higher in frequency, higher frequency, shorter wavelength, shorter wavelength is more easily degraded, penetration issues with foliage and buildings, so that's a normal challenge that we have, that we're faced with. And the last slide here, this is just really, you know, one of the key terms you hear in this business is gap areas, and so, of course, we provide a summary slide that shows you the combined gap that we're here to solve with looking at it from the both aspects of the low band and also the mid-band. So hopefully, I didn't take too much time. I appreciate your patience and obviously happy to answer any questions.
Do you have more questions?
Nope, no.
I don't have any questions.
Terry?
I'm good, thanks.
I think we were asking questions all along, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll get all the offline.
I'm disappointed that the flagpole is not a viable option. Not real excited about seeing a giant cell tower there. I do understand that there's more and more demand. Everybody's, everybody wants to stream things, everybody wants, you know, we live on our everybody wants to stream things. Everybody wants, you know, we live on our phones. So demand's probably never going to get less than it is today for that stuff.
We are open to discussions regarding paint. Like, for example, if you had a particular color, you wanted to paint the monopole that wasn't galvanized. I think we found that thunder gray and the galvanized seemed to work well. But I've seen towns, you know, paint them any number of colors.
Sky blue or something?
Way back, I was the town attorney in Pittsburgh once and they, they, they thought it would be good to paint clouds on, on one on, next to the thruway. And they quickly paint that, at Wilmarth, they, they quickly painted that off-white to cover that up within a few years because they were laughing stock. And so, again, we're, I don't know who in the town decides these things, but we're open to those discussions with you.
Okay. Like to open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? Raise your hand. Let me check and see if there's any calls. Looks like we, we have no calls, no electronic submissions. So thank you for your presentation. And have a, have a pleasant evening and, and weekend.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Guess that signals the end of the public hearing portion of our meeting. And we'll call this hearing closed. Take a brief two-minute recess to, three-minute recess to resituate ourselves if there's any housekeeping things that people need to do. We will be Okay, so we are back in business in our work session reconvening. And we will continue down our tabled items, beginning with-
Start back with number one.
Yes.
All right. 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the past stone mixed-use development. All right. So, since the board last met, you know, this one had been relatively quiet. We had been in contact with the applicant. They did provide a written responses to the tabling resolution as well as the updated memo from the architectural consultant dated in early February, as well as two maps. One showing sort of their non-residential space proposal and one highlighting the sketch that our architectural consultant had provided as part of his updated memo. They did come and meet with staff at PRC Wednesday, yesterday, to discuss their responses and their proposal for meeting the 20% non-residential requirement within the mixed use. So their discussion relied heavily on looking at the utilization of public space, especially public gathering space, not just, you know, any open or grass space, but the public gathering spaces as being a portion of that non-residential space or non-residential percentage. You know, as looking at, you know, based on, you know, they were looking based on specific sections of-
Right. So they're, they're, I don't mean to-
No, you're fine.
Interrupt you. But essentially, to get to the 20% non-residential space, they are putting forth the argument that the, if you see the blue dotted dashed lines, that space should be considered in the calculations for the 20% minimum non-residential component of the mixed use development. The, after the, I attended the PRC meeting and after that, I looked through the manual. I happened to call Peter to discuss it with him because my feeling, my gut feeling is that we're not counting that space. It's a nice try, but I personally don't consider that to be what our intent is in the district in the manual. And that said, we need to, to look at it and, and determine that. So there are several different areas that we found. And interrupt me and cut me off if I go off the reservation here. In 611 Zone A, areas identified as Zone A are intended to be in the most dense portions of the district with a mix of commercial, retail, commercial slash retail, office, civic, and compact residential uses. I don't look at, you know, a common, like a sidewalk, pedestrian spine, those types of things as meeting that. That, so there's one example. In 612, there's a directive to design a mixed-use development that quote, "provides supporting commercial retail uses." In 615, in Table 61, the Zone A section of the table, mix of commercial slash retail, office, and residential. And then with a 20% minimum of non-residential in the same, in the same box. It doesn't really talk about in that box, public, open space, recreation-type space. And then, in the third row, mixed use emphasizing vertical mixed use with commercial, retail on lower floor and residential office on upper floor. So it really, to me, the manual is encouraging the mix of uses to be a mix of residential and commercial, certainly in Zone A. Not a mix of necessarily residential and, I guess, open space recreational-type uses. And that is called out separately, actually, in the fifth row of the table.
Yeah. So that was my kind of, I agree, that's kind of my first blush is how do you, it's kind of a hard sell on the, including the spine. But, you know, in that table 61, you know, has some things to me that, you know, like you pointed out. But I, I did, you know, it was, I only got the letter today from, from BME. And I want to, I think, you know, I'm going to take a closer look at it and look at the arguments that they make. Because I didn't have that at the time when I first understood what, what I thought they were saying. And now I have a better sense of it. So, you know, we still have to take a look, a closer look at it. And I'll talk to staff-
Okay.
About that as well. But-
So essentially, this is kind of the crux of their revised submissions. And we need to come to some sort of conclusion, in my view, on how we move forward with this, whether this is an acceptable quote-unquote "non-residential" use, or if it's not, before we really look at anything else in this application. I don't, I don't know if, how we can really move. All the other things are secondary considerations if we're not meeting those thresholds or if we're not agreeing on, on how we're meeting those thresholds.
I agree.
So, you know, I'm open to any other comments and opinions from board members on that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, we're going to take a closer look at it and come to some determination on what the town's position is in that regard. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'll, I'm going to have to talk to probably, you know, the authorized official and kind of, you know, maybe make a determination on that or something. But we're going to have to dig deeper into this. I apologize. I didn't, I didn't, I knew, I didn't look at, I didn't look at the drop for this until today to see that it was in there. I only, I only understood what was talked about at the PRC, but I wasn't there. So.
Okay. So with that, I'll move to table pending-
Further review.
Further review of this application. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
All right. Peter can go home. See you, Peter.
This Peter, not that.
Yeah.
I was packing up.
Happy Easter.
Take care.
Okay. Next one.
All right. Tabled application number two, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the arbors at Penfield. All right. So since we last met, we, we met with the applicant at PRC and they submitted some new materials. One was a response to the previous several tabling resolutions as well as PRC comments, you know, around a variety of topics. Specifically, and I, you know, we can go through some of them, but the, you know, the big ones were lighting around the multi-use trail, looking at easement language for the multi-use trail since it was approved by the town board to fulfill the role of the sidewalks as part of the sidewalk policy.
So again, I'm gonna-
Yeah, no, you're fine.
We have the response letter to our tabling resolution. And there's, I don't know, maybe three, four, or five general main points that are brought up in the letter that maybe we can go through a little bit to make some comments on. First one, I guess, probably being the, the lighting. And, you know, the applicant did submit a, a lighting plan for the mixed use or the, I'm sorry, it's getting late, the multi-use trail. The applicant would like, at least the way I read the letter, they're not convinced that it's a requirement to light the multi-use trail. And would like some sort of determination from us as to what our feeling is as far as that goes. And so there's, I guess, nuances in the syntax or the language of the, of the code that talks about, okay, whether this would be considered an integral interior part of the development and be considered a sidewalk and therefore explicitly required to include lighting. Or as I would say that they would claim that the multi-use trail is more of a trail, trail, recreational-type trail and should be treated as a nature trail or a trail in one of our parks or other areas that typically don't. Like, they pointed out that the town hall park, none of our parks have lit trails and they're all closed at dusk. My own personal view on this is that I look at the multi-use trail as a huge amenity to the development and a huge attraction for residents. And the fact that we live in a cloudy city that's dark seven months out of the year, having illumination on a trail that, that gives me the impetus or gets me off my couch to, to walk would, is a great thing. I do understand that it's not a, lighting two miles of trail is not a small ask. So it's a, I know that the last meeting, I think we all had kind of a straw poll that we think as a majority overall agree that lighting would be nice on the trail.
Right.
And then, so I'm not sure. Personally, I, I would like to, I would like to see the, the trail lit. We did make a comment that the western portion wasn't necessary. They went ahead and did the- the layout on the western portion, and I believe that the, the opinion is that, well, if we have to do the trail, we have to do the whole trail. Either, either it's required or it's not, essentially. So, those are the things that we need to determine based on the lighting of the multi-use trail.
They just don't want to do it.
I think that, I don't know if I would say that, I can't totally speak for them, but I think that there's a concern that the added expense of it, A, is it absolutely necessary, one, B, the added expense could be onerous and could tip the project into not a viable project. So that's, now, I don't know if that's-
So, for context, based on their previous photometric submission that we reviewed, I think their previous one was from either December of last year, January this year, to this new photometric that they provided last week, showing the trail, it includes the addition, or net increase of 45 additional light fixtures to light what is currently the Phase 1 section of the trail. Ultimately, that number would be-
Probably double.
-higher, you know, to light the trail all the way around, you know, for future phases. Right now, they're really coming in for Phase 1 and for the construction of Phase 1, so that's what they're showing. But even within Phase 1, it's 45 additional lights, you know, to provide that, for context.
Okay, so I guess I would assume that, I mean, that the most, we're going to double it. So, 90 lights, probably more like 80 or something, because I think this is the majority of the trail, probably-
It's two miles, you said?
Seventy percent, I would think.
Two miles.
Yeah, so the linear distance of this one, I'm not sure what, what that is.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to take a look.
Okay, so, I guess that's item number one. Again, you know, my feeling on the type of lights proposed for it, you do nighttime lighting for generally three reasons, safety, security, and aesthetics. And I think that there is a safety component on this. I don't know how critical the safety component is with it. I, you know, on the west side of that pond, you know, where the trail comes close to ponds, maybe it's more important there, but in general terms, I don't think that the safety component is the main driver. Security component, I'm hoping that that is not at all a concern in this neighborhood, that there's, you know, never any fear for, you know, personal bodily harm, walking around at night. So, I guess I'm looking at it mostly from the aesthetic standpoint, and I don't, I mean, I don't mind if they're uplighting trees here and there, I don't mind if there's an alternate design that, you know, isn't, hey, I want two foot candles on average, you know, with great uniformity across the trail. That, that isn't necessarily my, my personal feeling on it, it's more, what's going to entice me at 7:00 on December 16th to go out and take a walk and, you know, stay, stay healthy? And I look at night lighting a lot of times when it's done really well, it's, you know, it's eye candy, so it can be beautiful and make you want to be in that environment.
Yeah, and I don't think the fixtures necessarily have to be like what's shown on the screen right now. For the different areas, they could possibly change to like a Ballard marker-type light.
I would agree. I think that the argument posed to that would be, if we're looking for uniformity-
Yeah.
-that there'd be more of them, which, you know, increases the cost more. There's also the argument that vertical foot candles on your face is not going to be as easy to achieve with Billards as it is with, you know, 16-foot poles. And to that, I guess I'm still at that safety, security, and aesthetic thing that, I don't know necessarily how important it is that, at least I'm hoping that the security thing is not even a concern, and that it's, it's making that amenity of the development that much more enticing. So, I'm repeating myself. So, all that said, are we of the opinion that we want to, and I know that we kind of did this before, but do we want to reiterate, or have we changed our minds on whether we want this multi-use trail illuminated?
I'd like to, I'd like to see it illuminated to some extent, you know, whatever the developer thinks is appropriate, but I'd like to see, and maybe there's even areas, like you say, to the west down by the pond, that maybe because it's further away from the development, it could even be a different design or style.
Right.
And maybe it would be possibly Billards, it could be a commercial-grade, obviously LED, but even solar, so the requirement of trenching and infrastructure-
Right.
-wouldn't be needed.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see, to some extent, and actually, I would like to see it especially near the pond areas because of, I do think there might be a safety concern there for people that move into the development that have children, you know, you just, I'd rather be on the safe side.
Okay, Terry?
I don't know, I, I was thinking initially when we were talking about that, it was just, I guess, more aesthetically, I mean, with the safety, obviously, you know, because I'm concerned about that, but I was thinking like aesthetically, just to look nice, I was thinking, but not an expensive one, I mean, you know, you know, commercial street lights up and down the sidewalk, I wasn't even thinking of that, actually, so, but I mean, you know, I mean, I was thinking like, put like little landscaping lights where people can walk and enjoy, you know, but-
Right.
-not so much a safety concern, I mean, it's a little bit more expensive, I mean, you know, this project's going to cost a lot of money, so, I mean, I was willing to work on that, if, you know, get anything a little bit, I think would be nice, like, I mean, it's going to be a lot of money, putting commercial lampposts up and down, you know. So, that's my thought, just the more aesthetically pleasing to, you know, illuminate the walkway if people want to walk around, because, I mean, there's going to be lighting probably on these, the back-
On the buildings.
The buildings and things that add are going to shine over there, I mean, I mean, how many people are going to be, you know, walking out, way out there, I just, you know, I think that, I don't even know what they would cost, but, you know, I just, to put that on them, I don't know if I'm totally in favor of that. I think we can come to some agreement, maybe.
Middle ground?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I, so, the consensus is, we'd like to see, we'd like to see some lighting on the trail. It doesn't have to be to the extent of, you know, Wegmans parking lot.
Lampposts or parking lot, yeah.
Right. Okay.
I don't think so, myself.
Okay. Do you want to say something, or is that, are you?
I would run to you.
Okay, come on up.
Good to be with you again tonight. Yeah, the comment that I would like to make is a clarification. I believe we've made the point to the PRC as well as in our letter, we're not refusing to do illumination of the trail. What we're asking for is an interpretation of the code of the mud manual itself, the zoning ordinance, that says explicitly in a legal interpretation whether or not it's required. It either is or it isn't. I appreciate the board's flexibility in terms of the type of lighting, and the fact that you have a preference to have the lighting, but we're asking for a legal interpretation of whether or not it is a required element of the code.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we got to work on that.
Yeah, so we'll have to talk to staff about that, and, again, work with the authorized official probably on that.
Okay. Okay, next major, and again, sorry, I'm head information overload tonight.
Clarification on the sidewalk waiver.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about, yeah, let's talk about the sidewalk waiver and the, the multi-use trail, while we're still on the multi-use trail. So there is a submission with a green layout as to where they are proposing the stubs, I guess, to go, and, so, apparently, the town board did not say specifically, this is the plan we're approving. What the town board said was, we will grant a waiver for, we'll allow the sidewalks to really be the multi-use trail on Atlantic and 250. They did not get into, I guess I'm going to call it the minutia, of exactly where the trail was going to go, exactly where stubs are going to go, and that sort of thing, they left that up to us. So, our previous conversations where we had no idea what they approved, what they didn't approve, but we do know that at this time. Is everybody comfortable with where the stubs are proposed at the moment, for them to, we can, you know, boom, move on and say that this is, this is fine?
Yeah, those, those three now will go out to 250, right?
Yes.
And those were X'd off, if I recall, from the last meeting. So, yeah, I mean, that was my concern, okay, so they're going to have three.
Yes, and then the one at the south, the south section of the eastern, north-south part goes to the northwest corner of that exception parcel.
That's my question, I'm good.
Kelly?
I'm good, I'm good with how it is.
I had one question. Would there be a pedestrian walk where that one entrance, it would be the east, the southeast entrance, yeah?
Where the cursor is?
I'm sorry, yeah, there, would there be one by that roadway?
Yes, if you zoom in there, I believe there's one on the-
There's a sidewalk on the roadway.
They're showing along, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, because the one to the right, it shows us, it, okay, I guess that just wasn't highlighted.
I don't believe they're showing it on that one, because this is going to be part of the publicly dedicated roadway, where we do have, and I believe they're, they're planning to meet the interior sidewalk requirement for a sidewalk along the publicly dedicated roadway.
Okay, I'm good.
Whereas the other entrance further north is going to be a private, private drive, it's not going to be-
That's why it shows the stub there. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, okay, so we're good with that. Roadway widths was another concern. 26, 20-foot wide roadway widths on the private drives, and questions about the alleyways and that sort of thing. I, I mean, I, personally, I look at the, and maybe I'm, the alleyways are really, I picture it, okay, I get my car in there and I pull into the garage, and that's really all it's for, make it as narrow as possible within reason, so that we're not taking away green space and areas for other potential amenities. I'm not sure if that was one of the concerns, but I thought I read that in here.
Was that four foot, not about the driveway apron?
No, I think that there was a comment about, on the, on the interior streets, not the dedicated street, but the, the, let's say-
Alley.
The alleys and potentially also the other interior roadways, as to what were the, what are the requirements that are going to be there. I mean, I don't see a need for sidewalks on the alleyways, and things like that.
Well, and, yeah, so, this, this was originally, came out of a discussion between the applicant and the fire marshal, and based on some staff comments on reducing road widths, we're able to just reduce the overall impervious, the overall impervious surfaces, so this was discussion with the fire marshal. He gave his sign-off that this, that reducing, you know, the blue ones to 20 feet was appropriate or acceptable per fire code. After that, there was some discussion based on other comments of whether, you know, if they, you know, if you didn't reduce the roads, could you do something in terms of, you know, additional bicycle lanes or something like that? But I believe it's staff's opinion at this time, at least on staff's side, that we are comfortable with the 20-foot road widths and, you know, shared access on, on roads between, you know, bicycle or other multimodal users. There's plenty of sidewalk around the interior of the development to facilitate pedestrian access.
Okay, were you, did you raise your hand to say something, or were you like stretching?
Stretching.
Okay.
Speak.
Just got to ask.
I'll jump in if I need to say something.
Okay, does that answer your question?
No, thank you.
Okay, good, moving on. Next item on this is, is it open space?
Yep.
And I think the overarching concern with what's considered open space, what's not considered open space, is future subdivision of property and additional development, and desire for, I believe, the town to say, okay, this is the development, and it's, this is the development, that's not going to be segmented down the, down the road, subdivided out and added to more. I believe that was the intention of that. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, this was based out, this was based out of a minor revision, where some buildings were included within the open space diagram, you know, it was sort of staff's opinion or determination that we didn't believe, based on requirements of the manual, that buildings could be counted towards the open space. You know, in staff's opinion, it's relatively trivial, they are so far over the 20% recommendation and 30% recommendation within the Zone B, in terms of that open space area, that, you know, excluding them did not make a substantial difference within their open space calculations, who are comfortable with what they're showing as their proposed percentages of open space.
What kind of business, or what kind of structures?
It was just, it was the vertical mixed-use buildings.
Oh.
Okay. You comfortable with that? Comfortable with that?
Our commutations do not include any building area in public open space.
Okay. All right. Okay, I should have highlighted parts of this because now I'm trying to scan it and.
You're fine.
The other main points on the response letter, um, okay, um, I'm looking at recyc-, uh, totes and refus, uh, you know, I, this is probably brought up because of one of the other developments with, you know, 30 totes out by the street. I'm guessing that, uh, and, you know, if you live in one of these townhomes or whatever, you're probably going to have a small garbage tote that's going to go out on garbage day. They're going to come around, pick it up, and it's not going to be 300 totes lined up on Atlantic Ave or 250, right?
Yeah, so the, so the applicant clarified that the, you know, the, what I'll call the single-family portions, the, the single-family to quadplexes will be serviced by, you know, toters like you would in any traditional suburban residential neighborhood, you know, your neighborhood. You know, you got toters, you bring them out on garbage day, you store them in the garage and, you know, um, uh, when it's not garbage day, the vertical mixed-use and the mixed-use areas will be serviced by centralized dumpsters with a hardy board enclosure, um, for aesthetics, and that the apartments would be serviced by, uh, internal, um, dumpsters and toters that would be serviced on garbage day.
So we're good with the proposed garbage management solution, right?
Good, yes.
Refuse management, let's call it that. Okay? SWIP and stormwater, we're good?
Yes.
Okay.
Materials for the multi-use walkway, what, did we ever come up with a determination on that?
That was one of their comments here.
With Jim Burton, I know. He's not here tonight, but I know that was, he's talking about it.
I believe it was originally your comment.
Well, I, I did too. I agreed with him. So he was going to, but he, he talked about, uh, you know, what the materials we're going to use, yeah. So what did we come up with?
I think we accepted asphalt as the material.
It is a material requested and required within the immediate manual for multi-use trails is asphalt.
Yeah, because he was talking about some, oh, pressed or stamped.
Stamped asphalt by outside his building.
Yeah, stamped concrete with that.
Well, he talked about stamped asphalt outside of his office.
Yeah.
Um, in a response to the suggestion of stamped concrete or concrete. Concrete's not a material that the immediate manual calls for. Asphalt, um, is the material that calls, it calls for in doing something like stamped concrete introduces non-ADA compliance and issues with tripping and maintenance. So asphalt is the material.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
The, uh, the pavilions, the entry pavilions, we got, uh, elevations and, and renderings for those. Everybody good with, uh, what they have proposed for that?
Yes.
I think they look nice.
Yeah, these are born out of, uh, the Chris Lopez's memo, um, requesting a form of sort of landmark or entry, um, yeah, entry landmark or building, um, to sort of introduce the development to anybody who's, who's coming into it. The applicant has stated that their intentions with this is that it will act as sort of a rest stop. Uh, it'll be placed in both sides, on the Atlantic and 250 side, will be placed, uh, along the multi-use trail. So it can act as a sort of a rest stop for pedestrians or cyclists or whoever's on the multi-use trail. Interior will have a map of the development at a pedestrian scale for anybody who's, who enters into it. It's not intended for vehicular traffic. But we'll also provide a identification so you'll know you're entering the arbors at Penfield, uh, when you see these, these little landmarks. The architecture is very agrarian, looks like a, you know, a small barn or farm stand in terms of its architecture. Um, and it'll have a trellis, uh, over it with, with greenery that grows on it to provide some natural shade.
Back to the multi-use trail and easements and so on, there is a question about, uh, I think a seven-foot, uh, sidewalk easement someplace in here.
There's, there's a discussion on requiring an easement over the 20-foot multi-use trail. Um, you know, we had initially reached out to see if they had language based on other developments that they've done. You know, they referenced the multi, the easement that we took over the pedestrian spine, and I think that is something that we could provide to them as a, as a basic framework for doing an easement over this, uh, multi-use trail since it is acting as a sidewalk.
Okay.
An access easement will be something that we'll require. So I'll, I'll reach out and I'll, I'll provide you that document, uh, as, as a framework.
Okay. All right. The, um, okay, so the, um, architecture of the, uh, buildings themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Now I have. Catherine, can you bring up the renderings of the architecture?
I'm good about it.
So overall, um, I, I think they've, I think they've done a great job on this and, um, there's a, a nice variety of building types and material colors and, uh, some material types. When I look at, um, you know, it, it's almost overwhelming to look at all the different styles of buildings and types, but, um, in terms of the residential buildings, like the duplexes and the townhomes and so forth, there's a mix of siding and stone. Uh, so it's kind of a mix of materials. There's different, uh, colors so that it's not all monochromatic. One thing that I, is not in the renderings, I mean, I like the fact that there are, there's a mult, multitude of colors, a variety of colors in the materials. Something that's not stated is, okay, is every, let's say, um, what we're showing here is a three family, I think, um, is every single one of those going to be red in the middle, uh, blue-gray on the, the left and lighter gray on the right? Or is there going to be a mix? Are, are they going to look different? So, you know, is, is, uh, is there going to be? Are they all going to be identical, that style building? Or is there going to be a mixture or a variety of colors? Maybe, um, you know, that's building one, building two, the red's on the left or, you know, I, what's the intent for that? I personally would like to see some type of variety so it's not, um, if there's a number of these, these structures near each other in a neighborhood that they don't all look identical. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
It makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, if you could, because it's, uh, like I said, we're really, uh, fighting the zoning board on our, uh, ratings and, um, we want to be able to.
The.
Have everybody heard.
The intent in the positioning of the buildings is that when you look at the overall site plan and especially in phase one, they're, they're typically not side by side. So we have duplexes next to triplexes and next to, next to fourplexes and so on. And because of their orientation, they're not all, they're not front to front where you would look across the street and see a, a unit that's identical to yours. So the positioning of the buildings is where you, you break that barracks look of having the same product, same colors.
Okay. That's, that's really what I wanted to make sure was going to happen so that it looked like an organically built neighborhood, not.
Correct. And we, while the colors will be the same on, on the building itself, because of their positioning on the site, they won't be next to each other or in a place where you'll be looking at two at the same time, basically.
Okay. All right. And now I noticed that there is, uh, a fair amount of, uh, stone and brick and so forth on the residential structures. I, there's nothing that seems to be, it's hard to tell on the commercial structures. And, uh, I'm hoping that there is an inner mix of materials like that on the commercial structures as, as well as the residential structures.
These renderings have not been updated, I don't believe, um, but the vertical mixed-use buildings will similarly have thin-cut stone and brick as well as some board and batten vertical elements as well as horizontal and, of course, the, the canopies and signage.
Okay. Okay, good. That was, um, anybody else? You know, I've, I want other people's opinions on that.
Did Lopez weigh in here someplace?
Yeah, he did. He did. Um, I think he's overall, uh.
He's cool.
Yeah. I think in general. I mean, I'm sure there's, there's some comments, but.
Yeah. Ralph, you have any problem with Lopez's comments?
No, sir.
Thank you.
You too?
I think they look good, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Good with architecture.
Thank you.
Would you like them to provide more specific details on exactly what? Like, if it's not manufacturer and model, but like, um, calling out, doing specific call-outs or specific product models that the board has some reference? If you did want to look up a brochure for, you know, certainty siding, you could look it up and see, okay, this red color is really going to be this.
I would, I would say that, um, the general answer would be yes.
Okay.
However, uh, there needs to be, um, you know, or equal or something like that in there.
Yeah.
Because we have to recognize that, okay, let's say they specify, you mentioned certainty, that specific thing. If they can't get it, or if, you know, the Pepsi versus certainty's Coke is like half the price for the same quality thing, uh, at the time of purchase, we need to provide that, um, level of.
And we certainly look at it for, and it's, I think the board looks at it more for, you know, it gives you a better, because this, I mean, renderings are great, uh, but it gives you a better understanding of, you could look up, this is what this red color really looks like. And even if they don't go with the same product, you know, if they're having, you know, the same kind of red, the same kind of gray-blue.
It's, it's a good point.
Okay.
And I think it's a valid point. We ran into that with eyesight, that, uh, oh yeah, this rendering, all this stuff looks great and the reality was not what we were expecting. And it was, oh, we substituted this for that, we substituted this for that, and it turned out from, to me, what I thought was going to be a really, really cool-looking building to not as cool as I was hoping it to be. So, uh, yeah, it's, that's a good point. What else we need to cover in this?
Back to.
Are we? Any, any other major or even semi-major issues that we need to discuss?
I think we're in a pretty comfortable location. If the board wants us to start.
Yeah.
Looking at finalizing the review.
Yeah, let's get, uh, start and to finalize and let's start getting a, a resolution put together.
We'll get resolutions, start working on our.
Start drafting a resolution.
Our secret declarations, okay. We can do that.
Okay.
Work through the post.
With that.
Yeah. I will motion to.
Table for now.
Have staff prepare a, um, approval resolution based on our discussion.
And so that we can begin to review it?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, because it'll be, it'll be a rather lengthy one like Penfield Square.
Yeah, probably thirty pages or so. And then, and maybe table pending that.
And table, yeah, table, pending review.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Hiddings?
Hiddings, aye.
All right. Have a good, uh, have a good Easter. Or Passover or whatever your particular. Okay, next.
I believe so, yeah.
Penfield Heights.
Okay, so last table, tabled application, application number three, 1810 and 1820, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield Heights. Let's go and pull all this up.
So, the, uh, some of the biggest, uh, uh, happenings, I guess, uh, on this are the determination of what we can, uh, findings that, uh, kind of determine what we, what, what decisions we can make and what, what leeway we have as a board versus what needs to go to the zoning board for a variance. Is that being accurate?
Yep. I think that the mixed-use has certain things that do grant the planning board some flexibility, but height does not appear, in my opinion, to be one of those. And that that is a requirement that if they want to vary it, would require an area variance from the zoning board. And there was a question, so Andy has a determination as the authorized official from the building department about how he measured height. Our code is clear that it goes from the grade to the top of the roof and our code is not clear when there is a, um, a change in the grade. And I believe he made a determination based on looking at the building code.
State guidelines, I'm sorry, go on.
He looked at the building code to kind of fill in the gaps on that. And so, um, so that's how he made his determination. That it's, I believe, his determina, I believe his determination is that it still exceeds 55 feet.
Right, so, uh, in order for that to proceed, they need to go to the ZBA for variance on that?
Yeah, so, I mean, you could, right, so you could, if you were to approve it, it would be subject to obtaining the, the variance from the zoning board.
Okay. And so that then leads to the question of, uh, how does the building height affect the overall development, uh, and the nature of the development? You know, do we, is this a, like, okay, the next move is the zoning board, how soon could they get to the zoning board? And the zoning board's going to have to understand what the overall project is about. Because if they, if they get the variance, then, fine, right? If they don't get the variance, if the zoning board denies the variance, then what, what does that do to the, the overall plans? I mean, it, how easy is it to get into compliance with the height?
Well, you'd have to lower the height if they can get a variance, but.
Yeah.
So I think the zoning board would be looking at a very specific, you know, so I, you know, while they would need some understanding of the, the full development, what they're really looking at is, is a very specific item. They're looking at how this building is situated, um. They're looking at how this building is situated. And in this case, you know, I believe there's a nine-foot general grade change between front and back. And as my, my recent conversation with Andy sort of progressed, the, you know, the way state code defines grade level is an average between the grade at the four corners of the building, and I hope I'm saying that right, because I, it was sort of a, I was relying on, on, on his understanding of the building code, is looking at the four corners of the grade and averaging out the height between them to determine the grade, base grade level, where you would measure from the grade to the building, to the, to the roof of the building height. You know, because our code does not define grade level, you know. So, in that case, you know, at this point, they're looking at what I think would likely be, and I'd have to, I'm going to confer with Andy on this, to, to come up with an official determination that we could bring forth to the applicant, so that they know how to proceed if they're going to the zoning board, of something where they are, they are off by, I believe, like, four and a half feet, is what the determination would be. You know, in terms of exceeding what the, the code allows, based on our determination of, of definitions of grade level and building height, based on our code and based on the state building code. So, the zoning board's really just going to be looking at that, and they're going to be looking at, you know, what we provide them in terms, or what the applicant provides them in terms of, you know, in this case, it'll likely be these elevations, and looking at, you know, is this a substantial ask? Not necessarily, how does it relate to the overall project, or how does this relate more to the neighboring properties? But, you know, looking at it in terms of the overall, that this is a small portion of this building that exceeds this area. Is this variance justified? And is this variance substantial? And they will have to ultimately weigh in on whether that's what, whether they consider it to be substantial.
They would also have available to them the fact that this board indicated that they were, that they, I don't want to say approved, but endorsed, if you will, that the height, I mean, the height before they modified it to make it lower.
Yeah.
So, that would also be information that the zoning board would have, when it renders its determination.
Yeah. They all certainly.
Well, I guess that is a question for the three of you. Based on the submissions of the applicant and the designs of the buildings and structures and the overall project plan, as has been presented thus far, are you comfortable with the proposed height of the buildings and the, the exceeding, I don't know if my grammar is correct in this, of that one, what was it, building?
D.
D. Are you comfortable with that at that height? Because I guess that would be the first question. And I'll ask Kelly first.
Yeah. I'm comfortable with it at the height.
Okay.
Yeah. I am too. Because as the applicant indicated, it was really just a very small portion with the pitch of that roof, just like a small triangle. It was a very small percentage.
That exceeded the.
That exceeded that.
Well, and their newest submission, from the west view, would be at fifty-five feet. And really, the challenge comes in, is that there is a grade change, and our code doesn't necessarily account for grade change in terms of, we don't have a definition or a term defined for how the board should look at grade level. And so not having a term on our code, we have to refer to, you know, in this case, we refer to the state building code, since that is what all buildings have to be designed to, you know, as a fill-in-the-gap in terms of an area where our code does not provide an adequate definition, or does not provide a definition. And so really.
It's kind of a mix and match.
Yeah.
Because the state building code doesn't go to the pitch, doesn't go all the way to the top either, so.
Right.
But we do have a building height definition then.
Okay. But to the pertinent question at hand, how do you feel?
No, then, based on the information, I say no.
No what?
No, I don't, I don't.
Have an issue?
No, I do have an issue.
You do have an issue.
Yeah, let them decide if, if they want to approve it based on this information. It's the code. I mean, we've been discussing this for weeks now, and I, I thought it was, you know, that was the issue. That was my understanding, so, so I say, let them determine.
Okay.
Are you, you're not saying that you're opposed to what you're saying? You're opposed to letting the zoning board know? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not, no, let them do whatever they have to, need to do. No, I don't, I'm not saying you have to tell them anything, you know. No. I mean, yeah, so, yeah. Whatever, because this seems to be the major issue that's been plaguing everyone for, I mean, you know, right along. So, if it's not, you know, I mean, if that's what it says the state code, based on what Doug just said, I say, yeah, no, I'm not going to agree, let them decide if they, if they say it's not an issue, the variance, you know, because we don't know, because the grade issues and all that stuff, then I'll wait to, you know, determine my vote at that time.
Okay. I, you know, I think I've said before that that's not, the height for me is not the mountain I'm going to die on. I'd never looked at it as a deal breaker, to me, so. I accept the finding that the zoning board has to make the determination. I don't know.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I accept whatever the.
You know, my personal feeling.
Can I just ask you a question, please?
Yeah, come on.
Thank you for the opportunity. Why this question is coming up a year into the conversation, I really can't understand. That's, this board has asked for this determination multiple times in the past, and I cannot understand why this is being determined at the eleventh and a half hour. But that said, you also can't mix and match your interpretation of codes. If the building inspector says that he has to rely on the state code, you can't rely on the state code, which uses an average. So if you want to use averages, you have to use average building height, not the absolute highest building height compared to your average grade. You use your average building height compared to average grade. And in that case, we're at fifty-one feet. I would ask you to give me one day or two days into next week to have that determination with Andy, before you send this off to the zoning board of appeals. You're mixing and matching code. You can't, you can't do that. You can't pick the absolute height, which we've already brought down to fifty-five feet, but for the backside.
Then what, what should he measure the grade? How should grade be determined when the grade is different?
So do you measure, do you measure the lowest grade?
No. No. You measure the perimeter, you measure the entire perimeter. You have a finished elevation on the front of the building, you have an average elevation on the sides, and you have average, and you have a fixed elevation on the backside. You use your calculus equation, and you come up with what that grade is.
Which is.
By averaging it, right?
I'm sorry?
By averaging it?
By averaging.
That's what he did.
That's exactly.
He's got to show the math how he did that, because we came up with fifty-one feet, being the average height of the building.
Well, actually, oh, let me, hold on a second. I don't think he actually measured that. He was making a determination about how you measure it. I don't know that he made that.
I don't know if he made a, we haven't made a full determination.
He didn't make, he didn't, he didn't do the calculation.
We're doing that math.
So what he did, is he, he said, our code says that grade is measured from, or, I'm sorry, height is measured to the top. And then he said, our code doesn't say what to do in this situation, so he looked to the state code to fill the gaps. That's what he did. But I don't think he did not, he did not do the calculations, so.
Okay. I guess I would just ask for the opportunity to sit and kind of look at, at that, because I, you know, I've asked around the firm about this, we heard about it, it is done in Ithaca, where they use the average height of grade, but you cannot, you know, say, you know, pick that average grade and then go to the highest point of the building. You have to use the same standard and apply it to the average height of the building. The average height of this building is forty-one, is fifty-one feet, from all grades all around the building. And I think if we can show you that calculation.
To the top of the pitch, you're talking.
No, this is, this is, no, this is to the average.
It's the average. So we have ten percent of the building that's at that, I mean, the amount that's at that peak is minuscule. The next pitch is to like, sixty feet, then you drop down to forty-four feet, and you have, so you have X percentage of this, and you do look at it from all, you know, three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around the building.
Oh, so you're saying, so, in, in the part of the elevation that doesn't, that's not where the peak is, you're only measuring.
I'm going, I'm going to the top of all of those as well. From, from the elevation that it's at, all the way around. I'm not trying to skimp out and not include the backside of the building, but we're using all three-hundred-and-sixty degrees of the building.
Yeah. So in the state building code, it deals with averages for grade level, but also averages for roof height. Our, the issue I think that came up with us is our, you know, we have our terms defined within our zoning code, and building height is one of them.
All right. So we're going to have, Andy's going to have to make a determination about what the height is, because I don't think he's done that. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
It, from a practical standpoint, I would suggest that you get an application ready and in on Monday, because their next meeting is the nineteenth?
Yes, I believe it's the nineteenth.
The deadline is Monday.
Right. So, at least get that in, and then have the argument.
Conversation.
Conversation.
Well, get, get him, like, give him the drawings with the measurements.
Just because you know it withdraws.
Well, the town is closed tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, it's closed tomorrow.
And, and so it doesn't delay any.
All right. That's a good solution. We'll, we'll get that ready, and then maybe second or third day next week, we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to set something up with Andy as ASAP.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other things on this. What can we cover? We did get revised plans. I haven't completed a review of them.
Did it came in Wednesday, right? They just got them in Wednesday, right?
No.
Wednesday? Would they just send us updated Wednesday?
That was an updated building height.
Yeah. Well, the building height thing.
It was the building height. So, their last full complete set of revised plans was submitted, I believe, on two-twenty-four. They did submit updated and revised landscaping, going through both the general landscaping all the way, including, forgive me, I'm trying to pull it up here, so I can run through Was, yes, we did get, four eight, yes, we did get revised plans, including revised landscaping Staff is still reviewing it. Most of our comments are relatively technical in nature. Yeah. So we're going through. There we go. It's a full set.
Overall, how's everybody feel about the submitted architecture? I know that our initial comments were overall positive with the changes that they've made. Comments? Is it, is there enough, is there differentiation enough? Is it, is it more in keeping with what the original intent of the district is? With the, with the changed layout and so forth? Are we, are we good with, with that? And do we have, I know Chris has gotten this.
Chris has gotten it, and he reviewed it. He was a lot happier with the revision. He really likes the rival court, believes it, it, it gives you a good sense of place, and that the pedestrian gathering space sort of between C and D really, you know, was more welcoming with the, the used materials. It, it's, it feels a lot less sterile with the color and the architecture. I know he was, was a lot happier with that. And that it, they've done a good job of bringing a bit of that rustic or rural character that he talks about in, in all of his memos, especially to the forefront there on the front of the property, where you're really going to be seeing it from the public realm. He was comfortable, or more comfortable with, and, you know, the, the siding on the buildings in the back, because they aren't as publicly visible, to, to two-fifty or to the, to the primary commercial corridor along the, the front, or the main road, I think it's Millpoint So he was, he was more comfortable with the architecture as this, in this revision.
And we're comfortable with the, I think we made this determination the last time. We're comfortable with the, the percentages, and how they've modified and, and worked out their percentages of commercial versus residential or, or non-residential.
And we did, we did meet with the applicant, we met with Bill Price and Costage, to go through the last PRC memo, so we met with them on, on April first, to run through. Like I said, most of our, our comments at that point, you know, a lot of it was technical engineering comments, you know, relating to stormwater and utilities, grading and sequencing, SWIP requirements. And so we did go through those, and, you know, I believe that was a helpful meeting. So we, we did go through those technical comments, and it looks like I'm still going through the, the plans, but I think they've addressed a lot of those comments. And the response, both in the responses, I gotta look at a little bit more deeply at the plans. I admit I had not done a full review of the four-eights submission.
Right. Right. Okay. So, let's try to get a much deeper dive into this at the next work session, so that we can make some significant progress on this. All right, everybody good with? Yeah?
Yeah.
Got it on twelve. We need some time to look in.
All right. So, Jim's not here. Does somebody want to move to table this, pending a further review?
Yeah, I'll move to table.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knower?
Knower, aye.
Hidings?
Hidings, aye.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Okay. Action items.
Okay.
Okay, so starting with our first action item, six hundred and Linden Avenue. Yes, they moved to table.
For the public hearings.
Oh, we still have to go back and do the public hearings, yes, sorry, let's move back to that before we move on to our action items.
Good catch.
Yes, good catch, sorry.
Okay, what I'd like to do is let's table everything and discuss it at the next thing.
Okay, so.
It's ten twenty-two, we have five more things we gotta talk about in addition to that, so.
Okay, so just move through each one of them, because I think we need to take, we need to take a vote on each application.
Yes, so Taco Bell.
Yep.
Make a motion to table it. Tidings.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Second one would be home.
Home outlet.
Home outlet, make a motion to table it. Tidings.
I'll second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Twenty-seven thirty Atlantic Avenue.
Who's, that's yours.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Eighteen thirty-eight Penfield Road, Verizon Cell Tower.
I will make a motion to table application.
I'll second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
So I think we should move all the rezonings above six hundred.
That's not right, that's not right.
Sorry, Ryan.
Oh, man, okay, six hundred Linden.
Alright, six hundred Linden Avenue, so this is Penfield Farms, formerly Harper Park, is the mobile home par, is the, sort of, one of the middle home, mobile home parks. So what they're looking to do is recently purchased by new owners who are looking to make some changes to the site, so we're looking at this as a, as a site plan modification. Not really changing any utilities, they're not changing storm, sanitary roads. What they're looking to do is really change the lease lines within the, the development. So the mobile home park sort of developed starting back in the early nineteen fifty's, and the types of units that were built back in those days were typically narrow and smaller, they, you know, most of them are sort of between four hundred and seven hundred square feet, give or take. You know, they're looking to come in and take a lot of these older units, most of them were rentals, and replace them with newer, larger, generally three-bedroom, two-bathroom units. Those units require a lot more space than the previous ones did, so they're looking to adjust the lot configuration to allow for these larger units. It, it results in a net, I believe in that loss of fourteen units within the, the mobile home park.
Does the park encompass all these other mobile homes too, or is it just the areas that they wanna change?
It encompasses more, they're doing this as a phased approach, so they're starting, so, you know, because a lot of these are rental, what they're doing is moving renters between the existing, the units in this area to other vacant units within the rest of the development. They'll, you know, do this section, move those residents back in, and then move residents from the next section into this development, through this section, and, and sort of do a phased approach through the, the rest of the, this park, there's, there's four parks in, in Penfield, but through this park, they'll, they're just.
Do they own all the parks now?
No, they just own this one.
Okay.
So there's one to the east owned by Morgan, and there's one to the west owned by the Sebastians. So, so they did provide a diagram, so this diagram shows the.
Are these new owners?
Yes. I believe, at, at least as I believe as it had been described to us, is all, these will all be rentals.
Company-owned rentals instead of where somebody can own their own mobile home and rent the, the lot?
It does require site plan approval by the planning board, so the note about it being administrative, all that really means is, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily require a hearing, but the planning board, it's not something that can be done in-house, it requires planning board approval on this.
Yes.
Okay, I, honest, I drive by there every day on four forty-one, I notice the trees all down, I think it looks terrible with all the trees down. I'm not seeing any, I mean, there wasn't a submission of a landscape plan, is there a landscape plan that's gonna be submitted?
No, and if you look, so they did sort of show, and it's hard to see, because the existing condition plan is, is very busy, but they did show the location of trees on the existing condition plan. They did note, and I believe there's four trees that they indicated as saving, they're shown in boxes with, I believe the boxes are supposed to be tree protection boundaries, so they were, were showing those, like, four, two, two remain, I believe two were on Arbor, one is up at a parking pad off of Penn View, and one's on a parking pad off of Harway. You know, I know the one on Harway still exists, I drove through there very recently, and, you know, I parked in that pull-off. I don't know the total number of trees removed, but there's a lot of them being removed, some of them are, were proposed to be saved on the slope.
So they're removing all the trees and not proposing to replace them with anything?
No, in our response.
Or let's say they're removing ninety-six percent of the trees, and not replacing them with anything, in their proposal.
That was, that was a comment that we responded, or we asked in our, in P R C, we did some of the P R C memo, one of our comments was, you know, discussing potential landscaping or future trees, if not trees, maybe shrubs. Their comment back was based on the density of the site between the utilities, the road, and the units, that there wouldn't be space for trees.
Okay, so when I'm looking at the previous plan, the existing condition, and the new plan, there almost appears to be more space between structures than the old plan, unless the shading and all, you know, maybe there's driveways and porches and whatnot.
A lot of the old plan was.
Bottom line is, I wanna see a landscape plan, and I don't know if everybody else agrees with me, but I, for one, I appreciate and admire the fact that they're upgrading the homes, I think that's fantastic.
Who is, who?
The owner of the.
The owner, so the new owners.
The owner of the park is putting, oh, these will be brand-new mobile homes.
What's his name?
Green Court Associates.
Does it matter?
Well, I wanna know who, who it is, yeah, because, I mean, it's been, I mean, I've been out here forever, and I go in there all the time, and, and a bigger problem besides the landscaping is the garbage problem down there. Are they gonna have somebody in there working on that also?
So it's a new, it's a new owner.
Right.
So maybe that changes, that I don't know, but, I mean, those are.
It's a good question.
Absolutely.
You know, and I'm glad to see Andy got down there and could look at it, I mean.
So looking at the existing condition plan, one thing to, to note is, like I said, these, the, the park has been around since, you know, I think the first park started around nineteen fifty-one in this area. Most of this park developed prior to a lot of zoning regulation when it came to mobile homes, so for a long time, it has sort of been operating as a pre-existing non-conforming in terms of building setbacks and things like that, you know, when they do come in for accessory structures and things like that, those are required to meet code, but even a lot of these, you know, the, a lot of these have sheds that would not be allowed now, just because they, they predate our nineteen eighty-one zoning ordinance.
Sure.
And predate some of the updates that, I believe it's the New York State Department of Health who does permitting, and has their own sort of requirements for mobile home parks.
So I guess the question would be, are there other parks around that these people own that they've done this with, and there's no issues with, you know, when you look at, okay, a mobile home has limited space, it doesn't mean that those, the people who live in them have limited stuff necessarily, they still have stuff, just like everybody else has stuff, where do they keep the stuff? Right now, they're keeping it in sheds and maybe under porches and things like that, and if all that's gone, where's all that gonna go? Is there a, you know, a place within the, in these individual units for storage, so that they, you know, hey, here's where you can keep your stuff?
See, units tend to be a lot larger, they do provide some basic sizing.
That, it's a question that I'd like to, to ask, I'd like to get a landscape plan, I don't know if, am I the only person on the board that wants a landscape plan?
So I had a conversation with the applicant representative who's here, and I asked about decks and porches and sheds and all that, and they are not proposing to do any of that, so they're, they know their limits, they're based, this layout based on state health department codes, so they know that they have to keep certain distances between buildings and stuff like that, so I brought up the comment saying, well, now you have no places for sheds, and they've stated that they're aware of this, they're not planning to have any sheds, they're not planning to have any patios, they're not planning to have any decks.
So in that case, it would be something that we would place into the resolution, have placed on the site plan indicating, or the subplot indicating that sheds and decks will not be, additions will not be allowed.
Because these are significantly bigger structures than.
Yeah, the largest.
Than what's there.
The largest unit they're proposing is fifteen hundred square.
Okay, just because I have a bigger house, does it mean that I don't wanna go on a nice day, go hang out, sit outside?
Oh, right.
And, and have dinner or drink a beer or something?
Well, right.
You know, so none of that is, at least I, I see a bunch of rectangles on here. There's, and if I live here and I wanna go outside, am I sitting on, like, the street? Am I sitting on pavement? There's no, is there a place for me to store a lawn chair or something in my house, so that I can put it outside the door and sit in the sun? Or, I, I, am I being obtuse here, or is it just like, what are we looking at, and do we have enough information to make an informed decision?
So, each of them will have a four-by-eight entry stoop, they just won't be able to necessarily expand that, and, expand that four-by-eight stoop. Some of them will have two, it's really dependent on the unit, and the design of the unit.
And do we have that information? Is it in our submissions?
If you go to the, scroll to the bottom-left corner.
I see the bottom-left corner, so those little, are those steps, or are the, what are those things, like, concrete, a little concrete rectangle? That's a step, that's what you're calling the stoop?
They also, they do have some community resources as part of the park, and it's something that's required for existing and new manufactured housing parks, so they, they're gonna have a playground, they have a community building and a community center, and other amenities, I believe they have a pool.
This is our opportunity to make this good now, I mean.
I, I agree.
I mean, we, it's, I say it's long overdue, I mean, besides landscape, we need a lot of other stuff.
I like the fact that there's rejuvenation, I'm just not comfortable with the level of information that I'm looking at to make an informed decision.
Well, that's what I was asking, to find out who the owner is, is, is somebody's meeting with these, to find out that information, that, you know, that's what I was asking.
It could be something we could ask, to see if they have other, if they have other parks within this area. I know they're, they are a national group, they're based out of Clearwater, Florida, and Chicago, Illinois, so I think, we could, that's something we could ask, is to see if they have other parks in the area, and what they've done in those parks.
Do, do we have elevations of those units typically, so we can see what they would look like?
On the lower-left corner, there's, there's all the information that.
No, but we also don't typically request that of a single-family residence either, and these are essentially single-family residences, they're just a different type. You know, when any of our residential subdivisions come in, we don't ask them for architectural details or, or elevation.
There's generally some sort of.
We, we sort of ask them what type of houses they're gonna build, but, you know, we've never asked, you know.
We should be, if we're not, though, I mean, it's been, it's been an issue for all the years I've been here, in those places up there, so like I say, now's the opportunity to get a handle on that, I think, from a town.
I mean, we're, we're getting down to colors and materials on every property in the mixed-use district.
The mixed-use has.
We can't ask for more information than a shaded rectangle on this?
I think we can ask, but there's, you know, the M U D has much more substantial architectural requirements than our other zoning districts, and we generally, in other districts, do not control for architecture.
Don't like the planning board would like that, though.
Yes, if they'd like it, we, it's something we can ask for.
Yes, we would.
I, I think I'd like to kind of see almost like, at least in my mind, like, what it would look like on the street, you know, the street view kind of thing, to get an idea, you know, there's a mix of different units.
Right, it could be great.
Yeah.
But we, I mean, it could be, oh, yeah, slam dunk, boom, done. But I don't feel that there's enough here, again, to make an informed decision. And do we, you know, if these units, I mean, if I'm the owner of it, I'm not buying these units based on these rectangles, right? I'm gonna be expected to spend X number of thousands of dollars for each one of these units that I'm gonna put in my mobile home park, I sure am gonna wanna know what they look like, so somebody has a plan of these someplace, I would think, or it could be argued that they shouldn't be operating a mobile home park if they're, oh, yeah, whatever, you know, just put it in here.
Who operated?
So.
That's why I asked the question.
I'd like to get more information, I'd like some architecturals, I'd like a landscape plan, I wanna see some trees planted, something. And I don't totally understand why that's not here, and, you know, should we be having, I'm not opposed to having a public hearing on this, you know, maybe some of the residents of the mobile home park would share some information on, on it. You know, I'm not saying that, that we should definitely need to do that, but I think the door should be ajar to it, so. And we can keep going around and around on this, but do we have enough information that we're asking for, like, do you have, have an idea of what we want?
Sure.
Good evening, everybody, Brian Destro from BME Associates. So to answer a couple of questions, the owner, the ownership group is Penfield Farms LLC. The community name has been switched to Penfield Farms, formerly it was the Harper, Harper Homes Mobile Manufactured Home Community. With regards to the units, they do have a website, they do have the new models of the units. It should be noted that since, since their ownership takeover in two thousand and twenty, they have been replacing units, getting building permits the whole time, but strictly on an individual unit basis, and this development just allows the community improvements to, to happen much sooner and efficiently via a global approach rather than one unit at a time, and they could just do that straight through this whole section, as they have been. They've been applying for building permits and showing the building plans for all of the units that have been constructed and installed the last couple of years to this point. As far as landscaping, we would normally look to install landscaping and have a landscaping plan. This site, because of the existing site constraints that we're dealing with, the existing roads, the existing utilities, the locations of the units, we are reducing the number of units by approximately 10% for the community. But we're making a better product. We're producing a better product that's more commensurate with the current market demands, two or three-bedroom units, rather than, if you have driven through there, you would see like 11-foot wide units, like subway cars. The units that had been replaced are roughly 50, 60 years old, so they're definitely due for a turnover. And here's some of the examples on their, their website, actually. As far as, let me see, yeah, that's the Penfield Farms website right there. So that's a good example of, of the units to be installed.
So why wasn't some of this information submitted?
Well, I think a lot of that information has been, has gone back and forth with the building department throughout this, this process. And we can, we can provide those separately as well to this board. We can direct that to your attention as well. As far as the landscaping, as I mentioned, given the site constraints, there isn't room to physically put trees because you have 10 feet between the edge of the pavement to the front of the unit. Within that 10 feet, you either have a water main or a sanitary sewer. And then each unit has their own sanitary lateral and water service, which is crossing that. They, per the health department requirements, have to be 10-foot spacing. So there's not enough room to physically put a tree safely in that area and then have 10-foot offsets from the utilities, plus at least 10-foot offsets from the homes. A lot of the trees there, I think if you were to look at the historical photos for this project, weren't there. I think they've just have come to grow onsite throughout the years. They weren't physically planted or planned, a lot of them. And then a lot of the trees, it was a definite safety hazard because you have these smaller mobile homes and you have these overhanging trees. And with the windstorms that have come through the community, you can't have, it's not safe to have large trees over these mobile home units. So that's one of the reasons why the trees, there's just not enough room. If we had a blank slate, we would obviously incorporate them and have a landscaping plan, but the site just doesn't allow it, given the site constraints with the existing road conditions and the, and the utilities. We did receive that comment about the trees having, the code requires two trees per lot and then every 75 feet along a right-of-way. It should be noted, these are just site area lines. They're not actually lot lines. So this is basically one residential lot. There's not 130 residential lots here. There's not a right-of-way through this redevelopment area interior to the site. So it's private drives and only 10-foot offset from the units, basically, to the pavement areas. The actual portion of the site that has a right-of-way that's along Linden Avenue is in the lower left or the southwestern portion, right there. And that area is heavily landscaped. I do have a couple of exhibits just to pass out. These are the two entrance locations into Penfield Farms. I know it is a shock just seeing the units and open from the Linden Avenue intersection when you're facing it, but there are, I did drive through there last night after I received the comment, and we did respond in kind with our response, with our response letter to the PRC comments. You know, there's the existing self-storage unit structure. So that provides a buffer for some of the park. But then to the east of that, there's an open area, and that's where you're looking at it from the Linden Avenue intersection where you're facing the site. On the lower, on the southernmost street on our property is Arbor Drive, and there's a very narrow area between the southern end of Arbor Drive on the lower right and the fence line between the Penfield Farms community and the adjoining parcel to the south. That parcel fronts Linden Avenue. There are approximately 20 existing trees along the south side of Arbor Drive that are proposed to remain, we're not, they're, they're not proposed to be removed. The trees onsite, prior to them being removed, were reviewed, and the significant ones, there's like a 50-inch maple and a 48-inch maple, they, they were saved, they were healthy trees. A lot of the other trees were dead or dying or had the ability to compromise the existing utilities or provide a safety hazard for the proposed homes that are going in this community. So that's why a landscaping plan with additional trees within the redevelopment area is unable to be provided just because you cannot safely put a tree in the site constraints around the homes, the, the utilities, and the roadways. If the board would like some additional landscaping along Linden Avenue, we could certainly look to approach that topic. But as you can see from the handouts, the actual area that's within the right-of-way would meet the, the design and construction specifications for street installation.
What handouts are you talking about? These?
Yes. That represents the actual area that is within a public right-of-way. Those are the two entrances to the community. That's just to the, self, your information, that's just to the west of the self, self-storage units.
I have to say, I, I don't have my head around this yet. I, I'm hearing that, oh, it's impossible to put trees in and, and still get the absolute max number of units packed in that we can possibly get with the absolute minimum setback between them that we want to get. I appreciate that. I'm concerned that we're going to end up with this suboptimal, significantly suboptimal situation. Granted, they're all brand-new, all, you know, replacing old units that needed to be replaced. But if this is going to happen, should we not try to get the best possible mobile home park that we can get? So with that, I guess I want to move to table this. I, I'm starting to get, and I apologize to the applicant for it being such a, it's 11 o'clock, and we've been here, it's been a long night. We've had a lot of information thrown at us, and I want a couple of weeks at least to see this. And I really, seriously want to have a reconsideration on a landscaping plan with this. So I'll move to table. Do I have a second?
Tidings, second.
Any discussion on my comments?
Would you, so for landscaping, would you look to potentially, if not trees, if there's some other shrubs or herbivides or something?
Well.
To green it up, even if it's not a, you know, planting maple trees, realm trees?
You know, one column of like, one, two, three, seven houses gone would spread them out so that you could put trees. And it seems that way to me, anyway. Something. I don't want to tell them what to do. I, you know, I'm hearing, oh, it's impossible. And I don't totally believe that, and I'm getting cranky. And so.
I mean, should this go to, I mean, should this be like a public hearing for this or no?
It can be if we want it to be.
I think it should be. I mean, I mean, this, this is, I mean, good news that somebody actually bought this and is bringing this thing, I said, bring it to the public.
I agree with that, too.
Let's look over the whole thing. If that's legally right, it's all right.
You have the option.
I would just like to, and with all due respect, we've been dealing with the staff at the town for the past year and a half, two years now. And we've been told over this whole time that this was just an administrative review. So that's, that's where we're, that was, has always been our understanding to this point.
Well, it's definitely got to be the planning board, which wouldn't be, which would not be administrative review. And so the, the planning board.
We apologize for the delay for your.
I think we need to give it two weeks, and we should discuss, discuss these.
We'll discuss that at our next work session.
Yeah, and maybe there's some additional submissions or something.
I mean, so if we want a public hearing on it.
I don't know what the timing is off the top of my head for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't either.
We'll get back to you.
But, you know.
Yeah. I think that'd be a great idea.
Sooner rather than later to get it, I mean, to land out another two months if you.
Agreed.
Okay, so that, so what everybody's saying is that we need to make that decision right now as to.
Not necessarily right now. So our next deadline wouldn't be until after.
After the next work session.
After the next work session.
Talk about it at the work session.
Good. Okay, do I have a second?
I did.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knower?
Knower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
What is the date of the next work session?
28.
4/28.
Thank you for staying up with me.
Thank you.
Sorry for making it wait so long.
Ended your night great, I'm sure. Have a good weekend.
Okay, we'll run through the last three items relatively quickly. 250-15.1E of Town Code requires that any rezonings before the Town Board be referred to the Planning Board for its review prior to the Town Board taking action.
Okay.
The Town Board has referred three to you guys. First one, 1177, 1179 Bay Road, northeast corner of town. It's a vacant lot and existing two-family within our single-family residential. They're asking that they get rezoned to multiple residential so that two-family is no longer a non-compliant or pre-existing non-conforming, and that they have the potential to potentially develop the vacant lot with another two-family or something similar. It was reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee that was supportive of the rezoning. The need for potential variances will limit the scope of development in the future, so it won't, they won't be able to come back with, you know, a big apartment or something on it. It's a three-quarter acre lot. So Comp Plan Committee was, was supportive of it unanimously on that one.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yeah, let's do a motion.
Yep, so I'll, well, the ultimate, we'll send, I'll send a memo on the Planning Board's behalf, so that you guys can, can make a motion to approve Town Staff to send a memo.
Okay, I'll make the motion to send a memo on this one. Yes, for this application. Tidings.
I'll second.
I will second. She's first.
Whatever.
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knower?
Knower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, the second one, 1234, 1250, and 1258 Northrup Road is owned by a family, has an agricultural practice on the property now, or nursery on the property now. It is owned RA2, looking to go to RR1. So the reasoning behind this is that the southeast corner of Jackson and Plank, a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, the Planning Board, or the Planning Board approved the Forest Ridge subdivision, now known as Rocco Pines, which is bringing sewers to the area. They're looking to go to RR1. Their plan would be, some point in the future, is to cluster along the north side where sanitary sewer is available. You know, you can sort of see where Forest Ridge is going in there right now where they've cleared out. You know, they're looking at the potential of the north side. They could cluster where sewers are available, and the remaining lots being RR1 would be developed at a higher density. This one was sent as supportive by the Comprehensive Plan Committee. It was not unanimous. There was one member on the Comprehensive Plan Committee who did not want to see any further development east of Jackson Road. But the Comprehensive Plan Committee overall was generally supportive.
Okay, and the Town Board obviously wants to do it. Okay, so move to memo? Somebody?
I'll make the motion.
Perfect. Do we have a number two? How about a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Great.
Good evening and welcome.
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knower?
Knower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, last one, and let's get out of here before 11:00.
Last one, 1271 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road is the, it's Welch's Farm Market directly south of Abington Place. He came to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, was looking to go from RA2 to RR120 to be similar to Abington Place to the north. Abington Place was done under incentive zoning. He's looking to do this through rezoning. You know, there is a stub road that was stubbed to his property with the idea that it could develop in the future. So what he would be looking to do is rezone it all RR120, but reserve five acres in the front, which is basically just past the, the tree line there, which would remain for Welch's Farm Market, the backside with, he would potentially develop in the future, looking at likely to be able to get about 24 units.
Okay.
Staff is supportive of it. There's sanitary sewer availability, you know, through Webster. The Comprehensive Plan Committee was not, again, not unanimous. The same person, or the same Comprehensive Plan member was not supportive of sending it forward.
Memo?
But it was generally supported.
Motion.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Was there some concerns at the Town Board meeting about that that I hear?
With any of these, as far as I know, there's, the Town Board did not have any substantial concerns with any of the three rezonings.
Residence.
With residents?
Yeah, with residents at the Town Board meeting.
Yes, there was, for 1271, there was a few people from Abington Place who got up and basically didn't want to see more houses behind.
One?
Which is understated. There was a few. There were a few. I was not at that meeting. I know Mark Valentine was. He did state that there was, there was a few residents who got up, were concerned about what it meant, what would come, you know? It was stated that it was, largely would mirror.
This house, but not okay for the next guy.
Yeah, they would, it was stated that they would largely mirror what they have on their, their property in terms of size. They'll actually be a little bit bigger. Most of those are about quarter of an acre instead of half.
So who's going to build those houses now?
Don't know. You know, I don't know if they'll sell it off to another developer or whether, I know we talked in the past with Rudy Neufeld, who did Abington Place. As far as I know, they haven't struck any deals or, or had any further discussions on developing it. It'll be a future project.
Okay, we have a move, motion, and a second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knower?
Knower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, any other business?
That's all I had for yesterday.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the marathon meeting. Have a great weekend. We'll see you in two weeks, and we will adjourn.